I have a Melanie Hall.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Lance.
President.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Bagby has not joined us yet. Councilmember Cruz.
I am here, and I cannot start video.
Okay, and Councilmember Paula.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Conflict of interest declaration. Any conflicts of interest?
I already sent my conflict of interest to the city manager. And I need the city clerk to allow me to start video.
I don't know why that's a problem here.
Maybe the top right, is there?
It says that the host does not allow me.
Do you know anything about that?
But that's okay, I'm here.
David, do you have her conflicts of interest?
David, could you replay?
Mayor, if I may, this is Jose. Just for the record, I know Councilmember Cruz did submit the, her item of conflict, and that is related, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember, but I know that related to the, there was ARPA funding, I believe, related to Times Square.
That is correct, Attorney Sanchez.
And then I know that we have Councilmember Bagby just joining us. There was also conflict ARPA funding, and that was related to the senior center, and I know Councilmember Bagby, you're just joining us, we're just going through the conflict section on the agenda, but I know that that was a conflict there. And they'll be recusing themselves from discussion on those items.
Thank you, Jose. Marta, any other conflicts that I need to know about? On the record?
Mayor, if I can, just to add, Councilmember Cruz also indicated a conflict of interest on consent item D6, due to being within 1,000 feet of Times Square property. That's relative to, the item is a temporary construction easement with PG&E for parcel one of the Times Square property.
Thank you, sir. Anything else for Melanie? Councilmember Bagby. Hearing none? Thank you. Agenda review? Any changes or deletions?
Mayor, members of council, there was some additional information that was received after the packet was published, most specifically item, consent item D6, again, the temporary construction easement, there was an updated easement provided by PG&E that was distributed to council, again, after the packet was distributed, the change there was just a reflection that there was a smaller area of parcel one, which is the southeast corner of Times Square along the boulevard, as well as there were some additional items submitted for, under new business, item G2, which is a discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act. There was correspondence received, submitted by La Familia Sana, as well as correspondence from Mr. Rob Kalsalowski.
Thank you, sir. Okay, before we move on to public comments, as most of you know, this is my first meeting as the mayor, and I would just like to read a quick statement if you don't mind. I want to start by saying thank you to Marta Cruz for all she did for our community over the past year. While Marta was our mayor, she included me in many items, such as the coffee with the mayor and weekly meetings with the city manager. Marta Cruz puts her heart and soul into everything she does for our town, and I really want to make sure everyone knows that and that we thank her for that. I also want to thank Gus and Joe for mentoring me over the past years, from my positions before city council, through elections, and all the way to here, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be your mayor. I'm looking forward to setting aside differences and working with our entire council to continue making Cloverdale successful and the greatest little town possible. I'm excited to set city goals for the year and establish proper ways to communicate. Council will be having, will not be having a retreat, as suggested in a local newspaper, but we will be meeting locally to make this happen. I want our disagreements to be made on the dais and personal feelings kept as such. When we make decisions together, supported or not, we move forward together as a team. Over the past month, there's been a lot of controversial articles in the news. These articles have many disrespectful, hurtful accusations in them, and has only added to the division that we are all witnessing in our communities. I look forward to moving forward in a positive way, and that this behavior will not continue. I ran for city council because I wasn't happy with the lack of results and decisions that were being made in our town. I ran for this position to support and do what was best for Cloverdale and all of its residents. I want a balanced approach to everything so that everyone in our town can have a piece of the success. Cloverdale has always been my focus. Together, we as a council will use our abilities, whether local or regional, to achieve our goals. I've made it clear that this will be the year of solutions for our city. We're all working hard for the things that we love, or the projects that we feel will be best for our community. I am excited to have all of our council working together on these. As anyone knows that has been in a meeting with me as the chair, I try to run it efficiently. I will be respectfully enforcing proper rules, timelines on comments, and timelines on presentations. I will do my best to accommodate everyone and make sure people feel like they're in an environment that they are safe to voice their concerns. If we can all be respectful to others, we will all accomplish more.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, very well said.
Moving on, B, public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anyone in the audience first that wants to give a public comment? Please come forward. And whoever's next, just be prepared to come up if I see you ready. Please state your name for us, for the record.
Kevin Kostoff. I'm before you tonight because I am outraged and frustrated that the city officials that are supposed to represent me and all Cloverdale citizens were so swayed by a threat of a lawsuit or the timelines of outside developers that put our safety on the back burner. The Planning Commission last night voted approval of Alexander Valley apartment, two to three, yet the discussion all evening was in regards to the ability of keeping Cloverdale citizens safe, or whether or not they could feasibly do the needed infrastructure in time for residents to move in. The discussion even went deep enough to name different pots of money, grants, that the city might bring in. Still, it was not a guarantee, nor was it enough. Conversations pursued further into impact fees from the developers, yet still not enough to cover the rising cost of infrastructure that would be needed to fully make Asti Road a safe area for 200 residents and their families. Then after the vote, we were given the information on how to appeal. The question now I have for my officials, were there previous backroom deals already made? Are we seeing collusion between city officials and developers? I questioned it. My points are, at last night's meeting, Planning Commission members getting up and ignoring public comment, or even their own members during discussion. A city attorney who in the past has said he wasn't familiar with all the state regulations, but clearly stated for the record, if the commission does not pass the development, you will open yourself up to a lawsuit. The commission was clearly afraid of the idea of the lawsuit, yet they stated for the record that they acknowledged the safety concerns. Is it not that a mission of guilt? If after the development is built and a tragedy occurs, will the city be sued at this time? For how much? And is there a cost for a life? The Planning Commission serves at the pleasure of the council, chosen by the council. They could have sent this to the council by voting no on all the reasons given. Unsolved issues. There are no sidewalks, no crosswalks, no lighting on Asti Road. No public transportation, no bus stops or pullouts, and definitely at this point, no trains. Busy lumber mill with multitude of big rigs entering and exiting, overnight rigs parked on Asti Road. Speed limit of 45 that is not followed. Can you feasibly lower it to a residential speed of 25? Will it be possible? Asti Road is still a major thoroughfare for unincorporated Cloverdale for special events and through traffic. And yet, the project is also backed up right next to the Russian River, directly behind the project. In closing, I'm also appalled at the notion that it costs a citizen of Cloverdale $3,000 to appeal the decision that was made in the best interest of their community members. How can people afford to be part of the process when they're already excluded by cost? Right now, we need the help from the city council. I yield my time, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Anyone else in the audience?
We do have some online.
Okay, I see it. Are you wanting to come up, sir? Okay, seeing no one else coming from the audience, could you please give me someone to the?
Mayor, members of council, if I can, I just want to note that we are joined today by Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Bagby, as well as our city attorney, Jose Sanchez. There appears to be an issue with their video being blocked by Zoom, so I know otherwise they want to join us, it's, their video isn't turned off purposely, it's, it's a, it's an issue with Zoom. We're working on trying to rectify that.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
My name is Ann Elston, and I am here on behalf of La Familia Sana, and I simply want to clarify whether that issue about the grant request is on the agenda or not. And if it is, then I have nothing more to say until we get to that point.
Mayor, as member of council, if I can respond to Ms. Elston, I, Ms. Elston, I did submit an email or respond to you via email that the funding request submitted by La Familia Sana for American Rescue Plan Act funds is on the agenda as part of the discussion, item G2, under new business, American Rescue Plan spending plan discussion. Council will be asked to consider that request as part of the ARPA funding decision. However, council, at their discretion, can decide as they, as they see fit, how they want to address that, and whether they would like it to be brought back as a standalone item.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Ann. Jill, do you have anyone in the audience?
We do, we have five hands raised at this time.
Please, just choose them down the line.
Okay. Debbie Howell, you're going to be joining us?
Good evening, Debbie, are you there?
Hi, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for giving the public comments. First and foremost, the city has to do something about the audio equipment for these public meetings, they're just unacceptable, and it is extremely hard to participate in a meeting via Zoom. I don't know what could be done, but it definitely needs to be done, it was mentioned, and half of the meeting was spent trying to hear people last night. I want to echo all of Kevin Costner's comments, I also attended the meeting, and I was very, very disappointed in the outcome and the, the ability to address the community concerns. And I am also disappointed in the fact that to appeal a decision to bring it to the city council, that community members have to come up with a large dollar amount, and I don't know if that is set by the state or by the city council, I have no idea how that works. The other thing that I just wanted to say is that I really have a problem with a commission or an ad hoc committee, I don't even know how the approval goes, if the state says the Planning Commission can approve these projects, but when it has dollars tied to it, and there's no assessment of what those dollars are, or where the funding will come from, I have a problem with it not going before our city council. So at some point, I would like to have that discussion on the council's agenda. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Quick comments, the audio equipment, we approved, funds for new audio equipment, we're just waiting for them to get everything in so they can install it. We all feel your pain on this one, and I apologize.
Thank you.
And as for the appeal process, I'm working on another angle, and if it works out, I will let you know, or we can meet private and we can talk about it. Just a way to try to alleviate some funds or bring it to our council, because it was quite the contentious item last night. Okay, Jill, next?
Yes, thank you. Angela Cordova.
Hello, Angela, can you hear us? Angela, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay. I also attended the meeting last night, and I was a little disappointed with some of the things that I heard. I felt from an outside perspective that our city staff was somewhat making this decision under the fear factor of, from our attorney Alex, saying that if they decided against it, then it would trigger a lawsuit with the city, which is untrue. That is completely untrue, that is, is false information, to be honest with you. I understand he's an attorney, and I respect that, but I really think that's such a serious controversial matter for our city, which involves a lot of money, a lot of health and safety issues with this particular project. I really strongly believe that a senior attorney should oversee this matter. Alex has already publicly said that he's not familiar with all of these particular laws, and I respect that. I also feel that there should be discussion about possibly Melanie Bagby recusing herself, since it's a direct conflict, she's on the SMART board, this is ZONE TOD, so that does have an interest for SMART when it comes to public transportation and housing and what have you. So I personally feel that there's a direct conflict there with her being on that board and on our city council, I don't feel that she should be a part of that discussion. And then just to reiterate the appeal process, again, I don't think that, that this should fall back on the community, I think that, again, our city staff decided this under a level of threat, under a level of fear, and I think that was really uncalled for, and I think our city council at this point, we really need our city council to step up and review this, and I have faith that every one of you will be able to do that and, and make a very clear decision, and have the community be involved, and most importantly, our school board. They are part of your, your governing factors here in Cloverdale, and they should be heard. And that's all I'm asking, is that the city steps in and reviews this matter again for all of the health and safety, not to mention, and I'll close with this, with the homeless fires that were behind this, my family had to prepare several times to leave the area because of where the locations of the fires were, where the lumber yards are, on that end, on the south end. We had to get ready to leave, not to mention Lake Street, there was a few incidents down on their side. They also were in fear, and we were all in communication, so that, you know, this all needs to be looked at, especially the whole issue with the traffic, all of it, it just all needs to be looked at by the city in a whole, including our school board and our community, that's all.
Thank you, Angela.
Okay, next hand is Jennifer Allen.
Okay. Good evening, Jennifer, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, please go ahead.
Okay, hi, I'm Jennifer Allen. First of all, I'd just like to reiterate what some of the other people have said, that I am completely disappointed and outright outraged at the Planning Commission's decision at last night's meeting to approve the project on Asti Road. Each member of the Planning Commission voiced numerous safety concerns on many different levels, yet it's still passed, and I feel like it's passed because of this, this looming threat of being sued that was admitted to by the city attorney. And I don't feel like starting a meeting out by saying, now, if you don't pass this, it can be sued, is the right way. Yeah, it's a possibility, but I'm disappointed that they're not standing up to the constituents. You know, there was an overwhelming turnout at this meeting to see against this for many safety concerns, and they were just kind of swept under the rug. I feel like the Planning Commission failed to answer the questions about the infrastructure, and if it was possible to get done in a timely manner, and I can just say for myself, living on Lake Street, the small stretch of sidewalk that's on the west side there, well, they can't, the city can't even maintain it, it's full of weeds and leaves and garbage and all kinds of things, and if you call the public maintenance, the public works to have them then something about it, they don't return your calls, they say they're too busy, so you have to flag down Dylan Mills or Hector and have them actually ask them, and that's how things get done. And so, the city clearly doesn't have enough workers to do this work, I have to call multiple times a year because they can't even walk on the sidewalk. Another thing is that the fee is appalling, it doesn't allow for our citizens to equally challenge their elected officials, costing close to $3,000. And the project has so many safety issues for the residents that's still addressed by the Planning Commission, and they are acknowledging that on record, and I'm just wondering if the city will be liable for that, when, when things, you know, happen. And so, you know, in conclusion, like thinking about what the mayor said in his opening comments, you know, he, he talked about keeping the town small and being there for us, and you know what? This kind of development, the infrastructure for our town is not here yet, not there. We want it, I, I'm all for affordable housing, but you need to have the infrastructure there first, and I ask the council to consider waiving the fee for this appeal to, appeal to your constituents, because we're at a disadvantage from that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Denise Keller.
Hi Denise, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, good evening. I'm also a neighbor of, I understand is not actually a neighborhood, after yesterday's, last night's meeting, but I am in proximity to the project that's alleged to go in on Asti Road, and I think, you know, I really would like to keep things as positive as possible, and I just really have a question to pose, what is the selective hearing about? Why are they unable to hear the concerns of the, of the very citizens that are going to be most affected? And in fact, all of Cloverdale is going to be affected, given what my neighbors' concerns are that have already been expressed, a lot of it has to do with the infrastructure and safety. So why is that not being heard? Why is the commission so deaf to the concerns that we have brought to their attention over and over again? So I think we need to explore that, maybe a little soul searching about where the priorities lie. So I'm hoping that, us having the opportunity to speak to you, and we appreciate that we have this public comment period, so that we can bring our concerns to this council. So thank you for the time, and please consider all of our comments and where the priorities really need to lie. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Leanne Fabian.
Leanne, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
All right, thank you. I was also very concerned about, and I attended the meeting last night with the Planning Commission, because all the commissioners expressed brave concerns about safety, yet they turned around and said, you know, like, voted to approve it. I mean, it wasn't a shock to me, I've been watching what's going on on that property for, since last June, and knew that was probably going to be the case, but, I mean, the concern is not only the safety issues, but also last night, they, the developer said they're going to have 51 parking spaces for 75-unit housing, multiple family housing, so who's going to want to live there if they don't have a car? They have no place to park. And who without a car would want to live there with no public transportation easily accessible? I don't know, I'm just, I'm concerned about the location. That's it. We all want affordable housing for low-income families, although, by the comments made last night, I don't think that's the actual intention of this project. There's a lot of people going to make a lot of money off of this affordable housing to line their pockets. They showed last night that they care less about the agricultural workers or anyone else for that matter. I also want to ask the city council to waive any fees or any, that have to be passed on to this community to appeal this, thank you.
Thank you, Leanne. Are all these turned up now?
It's echoing, yeah.
Really bad. I'm sorry, there's just a lot of feedback now. Check, check, that's probably good.
Yeah, better.
Much better. Thank you, guys. Jill, any more hands?
No.
Any, anymore in the audience? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. Moving on to C, proclamations and presentations. C1, a proclamation presented to Bob Cox for his service to the community of Cloverdale on the Cloverdale City Council and Planning Commission. on the Cloverdale City Council and Planning Commission. I actually have the honor of getting to read this, Bob. No one else wanted to, and I don't know why, so. But I I want to, that's why. All right. Whereas, Robert "Bob" Cox was originally originally appointed to the Planning Commission in 2007, where he served for three years until he was appointed to the city council. And during his term on the Planning Commission, Bob participated in the city's general plan update, the creation of its station area downtown plan, and the drafting of a major overhaul of the city's outdated zoning code. And on September 7th, 2010, the Cloverdale City Council appointed Bob Cox to fill the remaining term of a former city council member who resigned. And Bob Cox was re-elected to the city council in 2012 and served as a city council member for six years from September 2010 through December 2016. And Bob Cox was appointed to the Planning Commission for a second time in March 2017 and served for over four years until December 2021. And during his tenure as a city council member, Bob Cox served on numerous and and local, regional boards. Looks like we need to switch that, local and regional boards, where he represented the city of Cloverdale, including Sonoma Clean Power, Sonoma County Waste Management Agency, and the Russian River Water Ched Association. Bob Cox participates as a member of local nonprofit organizations that support the betterment of Cloverdale, including the Sons of the American Legion and Cloverdale Rotary Club. Bob has been heavily involved in community volunteer efforts, including work with the Cloverdale Performing Arts Center, Family Movie Nights on First Cafe, a nonprofit focusing on financial education for micro businesses that support community building in Cloverdale, and the Hometown Heroes Banner Program, recognizing members of the military from Cloverdale. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the city council of the city of Cloverdale does hereby proclaim its appreciation to Bob Cox for his numerous contributions to the city of Cloverdale as a member of the city council and Planning Commission, and for his role as a member of many different organizations serving the residents of Sonoma County and the city of Cloverdale. Be it further resolved that I, Todd Lanz, mayor of the city of Cloverdale, along with my fellow council members, do hereby acknowledge the dedication and significant significant contributions by Bob Cox on behalf of the citizens of Cloverdale. January 12th, 2022, so ordered.
Yeah, I'd like to just make a quick comment. First of all, I've had the pleasure of working with Bob in many capacities over the years, and I got to say, he's always the first to go to, and he's always the first to step up. And Bob, I know a lot of the projects we did together over the years, and I do appreciate all your hard work, always there, dependable, and you're still at it, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if my volume is on, but.
Thank you. But Bob, I just want to say thank you. I I look back sometimes at when we first connected, coming to Cloverdale, and I know whenever there's a call for volunteers, you're going to be there. I I personally appreciate what you do as a Sons of the Legion, because I know where the American Legion would be without the Sons of the Legion. Your work that you do on the cemetery is very much appreciated. The hometown banners, the hometown heroes, you do a fantastic job. And especially, I want to give a big thanks to your wife for letting you go and getting you out of the house, so we really do thank you. Thank you, Jeannie. We appreciate it. Bob, thank you. And we'll be seeing you every Wednesday for coffee, coffee and donuts.
Councilmember Bagby, do you have anything you would like to add? Councilmember Cruz, do you have anything you would like to add?
No. Thanks, Bob, for your service to Cloverdale.
Show me a tweet.
Yeah.
What's that?
Join for pictures?
Yeah. He's at the camera.
He's waiting for you.
Well, while the mayor's coming down, I want to congratulate him on his becoming mayor of Cloverdale and very happy that that's happening. I also wanted to like to say that the audio tonight is much, much better than it was last night. I can hear all of the speakers on on Zoom and everybody in on the dais, so that wasn't the possibility last night, so thank you very much. My volunteerism started basically when I retired in 2005. I took a year off and did nothing, and I was miserable. I had to get myself involved. I think it was started with the Fiddle Fest and then some work when they did the demolition right here at the CPAC. I remember painting the ceiling here and some of the walls, so a lot of work was part of my volunteerism. From that, I think Gus wanted to kind of push me to join the planning commission. There was an opening there, so that got me on the road here. And I too would like to thank my wife for supporting everything I did. She allowed me to do that because she worked seven days a week, 16 hours a day, and so I had all day just to go wherever I needed to go without worrying about what her schedule was, so I thank her for that. But it's very nice. I don't do this for accolades. I do it because I love my city, so there we go. Thank you. How nice. This is very nice. Thank you. Much appreciated. All right. Better turn around here. Which side?
Get ready. Want to get maybe right in the middle there?
All right.
Or advise the proclamation with Bob and you can talk.
Smile.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome. Thank you very much for this. I will be taking off very quickly because I do have a Legion meeting to go to that I'll, I may make it in time, but I will be back because my wife is going to stay and represent me here at the meeting, so much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Good job.
Okay, next, student liaison report. Guadalupe, it's your turn.
All right, thank you. So.
Maybe the other one.
Is this better? Yeah, there we go. All right, so last Wednesday, we returned from winter break and are now in our spring semester. Congratulations to our wrestling team, who did an amazing job at the Dennis Jensen Memorial Tournament this last weekend. Kaden McCutcheon and Kagan Jones were champions for their weight class. Ryan Moffett and David Alvers placed third in theirs, and Graydon Schreikel received fourth place in his weight class. Yesterday, our basketball team to, our basketball team went to St. Helena. The varsity team remained undefeated, so a big congratulations to our boys. As for our girls, their game from Tuesday was postponed to this Friday. JV will start at 6:00 and varsity will begin at 7:30 against St. Helena. Unfortunately, there will be no spectators allowed, but we can still cheer on our Eagles from home. Today was the last day to apply to the Cloverdale Citrus Fair's newly designed youth ambassador scholarship program. Now our students just wait and find out about the results. Rotary Interact is finishing up their coat drives, so if you have any last coats, please drop them off. Anything is appreciated. Our yearbook class has also been keeping busy. They are receiving senior pictures, baby photos, and quotes. Lastly, tomorrow, we will be having our monthly portfolio class, and that's what's been going on this week. Everyone is focusing on getting back into our school routine while remaining safe and healthy.
Great, thank you. D, consent calendar. Anyone want to poll anything? Vice Mayor?
No, nothing.
No, nothing.
I have D6 polled already for March's recusal. Councilmember Cruz, do you have any other you would like to poll?
Any what? I'm sorry?
Consent calendar, is there any items that you would like to poll?
Oh, no, no, I'm fine. I already commented the item that I need to recuse myself.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby, do you have any items that you would like to poll? Seeing none, we have a motion for one through five, maybe?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the consent calendar as submitted with the exception of item number D6.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Jill, when you're ready for a vote?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz? Mayor Lanz?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye, except on D6.
So the next is D6. Consideration of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a temporary construction easement with PJNE for use of the city-owned Times Square parcel for the purposes of staging construction equipment. Gus, is there another reason that you wanted that poll, or is it just for Councilmember Cruz?
Just for Councilmember Cruz.
Okay, so with her recusal, could we get a motion on that one?
We can. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and recommend approval, a resolution of the city council of the city of Cloverdale, authorizing the city manager to execute a temporary construction easement with PJNE for the use of city-owned Times Square, APN 001, 440, 051, and 001, 440, 053.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
When you're ready, Jill?
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Paula?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Upstate.
Sorry, Mayor Lanz?
Aye.
And Mayor, just for the record, for our city court, it's not an abstention, it'll just, it'll be a recusal.
Thank you, Jose. E, communications.
Mayor, remember, no communications for the agenda package this evening.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on. F, public hearing. Public hearing items will begin at the time shown or as close thereafter as possible to allow the completion of the item. F1 is introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending sections of the Cloverdale Municipal Code in order to streamline the approval of housing development affordable to owner and renter households at all income levels and promote development consistent with the state planning priorities.
Mayor, Kevin Thompson, our Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director, is going to provide an agenda report, and we're also going to receive a presentation by our consultant this evening, Kevin.
Jill, could you, could you, sorry. There should be Bruce and Cliff in the audience. Okay, so while we're doing that, Mayor and Councilmember, this is a proposed introduction of an ordinance. There's several different amendments contained in this in this proposal tonight. We did receive some correspondence from Claudia Cloud regarding an additional amendment that she would like to have the council consider. You might recall, this is part of our SB2 grant effort, where we did receive a grant from the state whose goal was really to provide projects that make it easier for housing to occur, particularly in downtown and near downtown areas. We did have a workshop with our consultant, Bruce Brubaker, and Cliff Lau from Placeworks, and they're here tonight. They're going to give us a quick PowerPoint presentation on what we're going to be talking about. Also, the Planning Commission did review this on December 7th and adopted a resolution recommending these amendments. So the amendments fall into really two categories. One is for the housing, and you may recall that Placeworks, our consultant, had put together some graphic designs for some projects that could occur downtown and kind of worked backwards from there, trying to determine what amendments would need to occur in order for those projects to move forward. So that's one part of the puzzle here. The other part is there's other amendments being proposed that really came from staff and working with the zoning ordinance, and those are really more related to assisting businesses in downtown and TOD. Some examples are lessening the requirement for use permits in certain areas. There's one in there about, we can go through all of these as well at the end if you'd like. There's right now, like, a use permit is required for entertainment downtown. We know some businesses are already are doing it, so we're suggesting maybe we eliminate that requirement for entertainment for a use permit. Conversely, the housing amendments, probably the biggest proposed change here would be increasing the density from 20 to 30 units per acre. Another proposed amendment for downtown would be allowing housing on the first floor under certain circumstances, not facing the boulevard. And we'll talk a little bit more about these. I'm just giving you some quick examples of, and then also parking reductions and some things related to restaurants, making it easier for restaurants, allowing retail and TOD. We're kind of opening up TOD to provide a little bit more uses than just housing and what's described in the zoning now. There's, it's pretty restrictive right now, so we think that some of these really make sense. Bruce, I don't know, I would like to turn it over to you to give your, to give your PowerPoint, and then we can bring it back for discussion. So I don't know, Bruce, if you could, if you could share a screen?
Thanks, Kevin. Hopefully, everyone can hear me. I'll try to speak clearly, but, and hopefully you can also see my screen when I share it.
We can, we can hear you, Bruce.
It is a pleasure to return to Cloverdale to talk about this project. I will be showing a presentation. Sorry, let me try that again. Here. Okay, now I'm just going to adjust this. Be full screen. Hopefully, everyone can see that screen, and I will give, as Kevin mentioned, a short presentation about the proposed zoning amendments. The project has been going since April of 2021. It is a state-funded grant that is funding the project to look at development in the downtown area of Cloverdale. We are in the the final run of the project, and this is the final hearing for it. We have looked at zones that include the two downtown zones as well as the TOD zone to see if there are any constraints, or what constraints there may be, to getting development that is in character with existing context of Cloverdale, and to actually encourage that kind of development that is in character. The project goals are, as I mentioned, to attract new development, to look at ways to entice new or different housing types that may offer lower costs to renters or purchasers. To, housing in downtown can support vibrant downtown and actually give more demand for downtown businesses. The housing can also make it available for people who want to live in a walkable city center, which Cloverdale has currently, and allow people who maybe don't want to drive as much as they might otherwise to live in a place where you can walk and bicycle and bike train. And to also, this, the. And to also, this, these new developments would support existing and future transit use. The project team looked at a lot of different documents as we were developing opportunities and ideas about how to streamline development in downtown, including all of these documents, with a particular focus on the zoning, which stems from the, the transit, the stationary at downtown precise. I mentioned the timeline already. Sorry. This is the zoning that we are looking at. The red or peach-colored zoning is the downtown commercial zone. The lighter purple is the office residential zone. And the darker purple is transit-oriented development zone. One thing we did is work with the commission and, and staff to to find a couple of opportunity sites to look at what, to do a test fit and see what kind of obstacles there may be to developing a project on a site in downtown. So we actually looked at two sites in your downtown. So both of these are the downtown, the DTC zone. And both of them are close to Cloverdale Plaza, so they're right on Cloverdale Boulevard. The first one is directly across the street from Cloverdale Boulevard. And we were able to develop a high-level kind of conceptual plan for what could happen on that site that included ground-floor commercial, retail, and residential units above with parking behind. This site plan shows the peach color being commercial uses facing Cloverdale Boulevard. It's part of the best reading-oriented environment you have there. Parking behind the commercial, access from the alley, behind the parcels, and then stairway and elevator to residential above. This is a picture of the site as it exists. And what a project like that could look like, this is a conceptual scheme, and is not, it's not proposed to be an actual development proposal, but it is fairly realistic in terms of what can fit on the site, given the amount of parking that you can also fit on the site and the size of the lot. The concept basically had a little less than a quarter-acre lot that fit about 2,400 square feet of retail, which is enough to do two smaller retail spaces, or it could be a single larger space. There could be seven residential units on the second and third floors. Six retail parking stalls would be provided in the rear. And then there would be nine dedicated residential parking stalls, so a little more than one space per unit. We also looked at another opportunity site, which is exactly next to Cloverdale Plaza, so across the street from that, that other one. This is a larger site. It would include, it would need to, well, at least in our proposal, we looked at removing the buildings that were existing on the parcel to see what kind of development could happen if the site was, was to be cleared. So this was, again, it's not an actual development proposal, it's just an experiment to see what would fit on the site. And the site plan, again, includes commercial along Cloverdale Boulevard. And parking behind is, in this case, it also includes residential units that would be on the ground floor, not facing Cloverdale Boulevard, but facing the Plaza section. Here is an image of the existing site, and this is an image of the kind of development that could come about if this site was cleared and redeveloped. The site plan shows that there could be up to five retail spaces. Those could be combined in different ways to make different sizes. Units above would include eight apartments. And the yellow buildings are townhouses, so those would be multi-story townhouses. And the parking would include 13 shared parking stalls, so that could be shared. They could be retail use or residential use, perhaps residential at night and retail in the day. And then there would be 22 dedicated residential parking stalls. So these, these concept plans that we looked at told us a lot about what, what you have in terms of the existing entitlement structure that would help support projects like these and which would create barriers to projects like this. So some of our findings were that actually, in your existing zoning, the existing height limit, which is 35 feet, is enough to do three stories and is not an obstacle. The allowable uses in your downtown are also well thought out and worthwhile for the type of development we think would be feasible. One recommendation we had is that any building mass above the second floor should be stepped back. And we've included that into our recommendations for the zoning amendments. And we had some minor recommendations for parking, including reducing the amount of parking required for restaurants and bars, which is quite high currently relative to other cities, and could be reduced in our estimation. The density was another factor that we thought did present an obstacle for good development in downtown. On some of these smaller sites, the, they would benefit from going from a, the existing 20 dwelling unit to the acre limit that there is now to a 30 dwelling unit to the acre. And that would, in particular, make this site work that we're looking at in this image, which was about a 28 dwelling unit to the acre density. So it's higher than the 20 unit acre density that exists in the code today. So our recommendation is to consider raising the dwelling unit to acre density for the downtown and TOD zones. And we did a high-level review of parcels in downtown in the TOD zones to see which, it was, it was kind of a capacity study to see how many opportunity sites there might be for redevelopment. And we counted up those sites and calculated acreage and therefore the amount of housing that would fit on those sites. And what we found, and again, this is highly conceptual, you were only, it was more of a mathematical exercise in that we were counting the parcel size and we were counting the amount of units that would be allowed. So we weren't actually laying out projects on all these different sites. But as we did that, we found that in the downtown core zone, the city could expect up to 45 additional units throughout downtown if all potential development happened on opportunity sites. And by opportunity sites, we were thinking of sites that were either vacant or perhaps occupied by a smaller building that would be potentially redeveloped into a new project. So we thought that up to around 45 additional units might come about from this raised to 30 dwelling unit to the acre. In the TOD zone, we found that there might be as many as 36 additional units, maybe realized, but with a very big caveat. And that is that we did not review, we did not include Citrus Fair parcels or 401 Askew Road parcels in that analysis. Those are the larger parcels in the TOD zone. And, but we understand that Askew Road has a development proposal already and that Citrus Fair is something that is not likely to be developed in this manner, at least in the near term. So all other parcels in TOD, if the dwelling, if the density was increased, we might find up to 36 additional units that could be developed. I've seen that before. Sorry. I don't know, I went back to the start. Sorry, let me just get back here. Okay. Some other findings that we had from doing our exercises that residential on ground floor should be allowed in your downtown, except on Cloverdale Boulevard. It's a wonderful, just reading-oriented retail street, it should remain that way. And the code restricts residential from being on the ground floor throughout downtown. So our proposal would need to change it slightly to allow for residential on ground floor other than Cloverdale Boulevard. So we feel like that won't impact the character of downtown and would give more opportunities for new residential development in downtown. We also recommend that requirements for landscaping and parking lots in the downtown be reconsidered, that there be more flexibility. Because the landscaping requirements are really written for larger kind of shopping center-type parking lots that might be, that, that do benefit from having landscaping requirements. But in, in your downtown, the sites are tight. Some of the parking areas might be quite compact. And in both these cases that we, that I showed you, the parking is behind the buildings, so not really visible. So we recommend giving more flexibility to this development by eliminating or reducing the requirement for landscaping in those parking lots. And then there's other minor adjustments to the permitted use table in your zoning code, and a lot of those had to do, they came from staff, many of them, just to streamline things that they find in their day-to-day work would be helpful for, for making, you know, permitting easier for development that's, that's, you know, in character with your downtown. And then finally, adjustments to the office residential district. Currently, there's a couple of parcels that are split between two zones, so it's a single parcel, two zones. And, and we are recommending that be changed to, for an applicant to either choose one or the other zone and not have to do two separate projects when they develop. So that is also in the zoning amendments. That concludes my presentation. We do have this draft amendments document that is in your package. I have it on screen. I can, I can bring up any of the amendments that we're proposing. And for discussion, if you prefer, I won't go through them now, but I will note that there is a summary table of proposed changes that is in your package as well, and that is what is on the screen right now. So I can leave this up during discussion and/or actually move through the document to get into an amendment if, if any of the council members desire. So with that, thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bruce. Kevin, do you want to add anything before we open it up?
I'd just clarify what Claudia's request was, and I, I think she's here, she may want to elaborate. But it had to do with the length of stay in the hotels and motels in town. The code currently allows up to 30 days. And the request was to reduce that to 10. It's not exactly contained within the zoning, but we thought this might be an opportunity to discuss that since we're doing kind of a larger code amendment through this process.
Great, thank you. So I can't see any of the people, so I'm just going to ask, Councilmember Bagby, do you have any comments? I would like to start with you, if you don't mind.
You know, no questions as of yet.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Cruz?
No questions at this moment either.
Councilmember Paula?
No questions at this point. I'd like to hear from the public first.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I, I just, I just have a couple. I guess my microphone is.
Is on now. Okay, good, thank you.
So, you know, after attending last evening's Planner Commission meeting, you know, density just rings loud and clear. So just a couple of quick questions. So we're looking to increase the housing units from 20 to 30 per acre. So if it's a half an acre, then it would be from 10 to 15, and it will ratchet down accordingly, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I don't really think that we have that many one-acre lots in, in downtown. But let's go to the TOT lots that were identified. In addition to being able to put that 30 units per acre, they would then qualify for a density on top of that?
Provided they were affordable projects.
Yes, not market rate, but affordable. So they would be entitled to even having more than 30 per acre?
Correct.
That is correct.
And, and then the big thing, of course, is the parking in the downtown. There would be no restrictions on parking?
No.
Based, based on SB nine and SB 10?
Oh. Right, there, there could be, if, if affordable housing is provided, then there could be parking streamlining that could be triggered.
So then we can be creating a duplicate of what we saw last night in the downtown?
Generally, yes, but I would add that typically, the affordable housing projects that I've seen require probably a bigger space than what we currently have available downtown. So the thought, the thought here was, given that what's available downtown in the opportunity sites is generally pretty small, that a higher density wouldn't be as big of an impact because it's not like you're saying, we're going to go to 30 units per acre over this 10-acre site. These are quarter-acre sites, and they're smaller. And it really came from the idea of the, the renderings that Bruce had put together and how we could work backwards to make that work. But if an affordable housing project did come in downtown and we had the, there, I just want to point out one other thing that I really think is relevant here is even though we have a higher density, there are other things that keep projects hemmed in, like the height restriction. So it would be difficult to get very high density when you have setbacks and height restrictions. Bruce, I don't know if you had any thoughts about that?
That's absolutely true. We, you know, one thing that really is triggering this whole project is how do we get really good residential development that would benefit downtown into those smaller downtown spaces? And, and so that's why we, we went to the density issue. We are not proposing to change parking standards for, from the existing, for the, for the housing projects. There, there are some recommended changes for some other uses. But parking standards would not be changing here in our amendment, to the most part. And one other thing I would mention about parking is that in other places that we work, we, we are always finding that developers that do provide housing are providing parking with the housing to a level that they feel works for, you know, the marketability of their, of their project. We've done work in Redding, which actually, in their downtown, there is a zero parking standard. So you don't have to provide any parking in their downtown. And yet, what we see on housing projects there is that there is some amount of parking provided, usually more than, either one or, or more than one unit. Parking space per unit.
Okay. I, I just know the developers that have come to town and developed because of the regulations have created problems for the city, and I'm pointing to Ioli Ranch, I'm pointing to Citrus Gardens, where it's, it's great, they're affordable housing, they're definitely needed, but the parking is out on Cloverdale Boulevard. And it just causes, there's unintentional consequences that go along with that. And I just want to make sure that, that, that we can. And I just want to make sure that we can protect ourselves from having situations arise that create unsafe, undesirable housing within Cloverdale. So, thank you.
So there still is a parking standard for market rate projects for downtown?
Yes.
So, the affordable, as we've lived through the last year, they can request, you know, so that could really occur in any residential zone? So I don't know if that gets to your question, but there's still parking standards for downtown?
Thank you.
So, if I may, Mr. Mayor, so just to expand on that, so we're all clear, the state law supersedes irregardless of what we put in place when it comes to low to very low, as far as the con density, the number of spaces we could require? Is that what I'm hearing?
For affordable housing?
For affordable housing.
Provides us, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, we could put whatever we want in our code, the reality is, the state law oversees, it supersedes what we do, and we have to follow the state law. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. Because we labor over what's the right thing to do, and then it gets into what can we legally do? And the state law supersedes a lot of the things that we can do, unfortunately. So, okay, just wanted clarity.
And can I actually go a little bit further with that, if you don't mind? With, if we leave it at 20 units per acre, would affordable housing coming in, it would be on top of that 20 per acre, it wouldn't, correct?
Density bonus?
The density bonus, correct.
Right.
But if we go to 30 per acre, then it's 30 plus the density bonus, is that correct?
That is correct.
So that it would allow 10 plus the percentage of density bonus on top of, okay? And then, I was looking at the drawings or the renderings that you had, Bruce. The first one on Cloverdale Boulevard, I'm sorry, I missed how many units per acre you had on that first building. It was a three-story with the top setback in between, not the one that replaced buildings, but the one that was in between. Can you tell me? 27, I think.
Shoot, I'm going to ask Cliff, this is a show that I took off a slide that had the density, I believe, I believe it's around, just under 30.
28, yes.
But we can verify that.
Looking at the numbers, it's basically 28 per acre with that set.
28, that sounds right.
I am very nervous about raising this, no matter where. With this zoning, does this affect TOD properties that are further down the road?
Well, he, they, I asked Bruce to do the analysis, so he did mention that going from 20 to 30 in the TOD could result in 36 additional units, and with those caveats of not counting the Citrus Fair as a potential site. And then in downtown, going from 20 to 30, could raise it 45. And we're talking market rate housing now, we're not, the affordable, if we leave that aside for now, it's just what they would be allowed to do. Again, the other constraints that are, that would remain in the zoning are, they do have to, there is a parking requirement, there's a height requirement, and we can impose height requirements even on affordable housing, it's an objective standard. So, I just think it's difficult to actually get to the highest density, given other constraints. But Bruce, I don't know if you concur with that, but that's my take.
I do confer, I do concur, Kevin, that the tightness of its sites in the downtown and the remaining TOD parcels, for that matter, along with the height restrictions, setbacks, and so forth, make it difficult to achieve a developable project at 20 units per acre.
And the height requirement is also one of the density bonuses that they could supersede as well from the state? I'm pretty sure they can go as high as they want to fit their units, is that...
That may be correct. I'm not sure, what do you know about that, David?
My understanding is that height standards are an objective standard, and therefore, those can, you can hold firm on, those aren't subjective, meaning, you know, it's not interpretive by one's opinion. So, I believe you cannot just seek a concession on the height standard. And that would, for those projects that, again, are applying to meet affordability requirements, or requesting building affordable units, I think your question, Mayor, is whether those requirements can be exempted. My understanding is that height requirements cannot, but that is an issue we can certainly check and verify and confirm. I believe it's an objective standard that we can, we can hold on, but let us make sure that that's...
Yeah, the one issue that I've seen come up with that is going from three to four means you're going from wood construction to steel frame construction, and it's, not to say that it's something that would be in the code, it'd be in the fire code and the building code, and that cost, really makes it cost prohibitive, but like David said, we'll check on that and make sure, if that is something they could request as a waiver through the concessions program.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My understanding is, based on some of the past presentations, and maybe we get some clarity from the city attorney's office, maybe not tonight, but as we move forward, that they could implement these bonuses, which takes away a certain requirement. So if they had three bonus entitlements, that, how does that impact the height requirement if we had it set at two stories, and they want to do a three-story building if they exercise a bonus? And I know that's how they apply it to parking conditions as well, and different things. So there's a lot of confusion on just exactly how this all regulates out, and I'd really like to get more clarity from a legal standpoint as we try to piece this together. Has it impacts, you know, market rate is one thing, but the low to very low moderate is something else. And I want to really be clear, what we're approving, or at least being asked to approve, how that all fits? Because I'm not as clear as I think I need to be on this. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Please.
Yeah, just kind of to dovetail on what Councilmember Paula was just commenting on, I wonder, it might be asking too much of our consultants, would I wonder, if Bruce or Cliff, or maybe even city manager, community development director could weigh in? I mean, what I heard pretty loud and clear from them was, we really need to talk about downtown core separate from TOD. And what I was hearing from the consultants and the community development directors, when we're talking about downtown, we're talking about downtown core, we're talking about property values that are very highly unlikely to want to place affordable housing, that would then take, would want to take advantage of some of those height bumps or parking bumps. And it sounds to me, I don't know if they want to, you know, expand on it, but it sounds like we're kind of arguing about how many angels we can balance on ahead of a pin when we're talking about these concessions in the downtown core. Because I just, with market forces the way they are, I think that it's, it sounds like it's highly unlikely. It's more of a concern in transit-oriented development. And, you know, what I see, based on the presentations that they've given, is that we're more likely to see something like a co-housing project, that is high-end and market rate, come into these places, and we may even want to actively market them to a group who is looking for a co-housing site. These are really going to be, you know, higher value, market rate houses. So I just feel like we're getting a little bogged down in the parking issue that isn't really applicable for what we're talking about. So if one of the consultants or community development director would kind of jump in and clarify, maybe we just really need to separate the discussion of the discussions around those two areas, because they are very different.
Kevin, could I start?
Yes, please.
Okay. I totally agree with Councilmember Bagby, that the issue we're really trying to grapple with here is that there's not new development coming into downtown, or at least not at a very high rate. And we wanted to see what is preventing actually good market rate projects from coming to downtown. And so there are some, what I feel are fairly modest changes that could help that happen. It also could help increase density beyond that, if a fully affordable project came in in downtown, but I feel that that's relatively unlikely, mostly because of the scale of the projects we're talking about here. I think most affordable housing developers like to see a certain baseline size project that they want to get involved with. There's management involved and other things that really, very difficult to do on a smaller scale project. So we're looking at projects downtown that might range from 10 to 20 units in a project, and that's relatively small for an affordable housing project. But at the same time, keeping in mind, we want good market rate development in downtown, how can we, how can we get that? So that's really the kind of thing that we're trying to balance.
Thank you, Bruce, and thank you, Member.
Yeah, thanks for the explanation. And, yeah, just if I could just make one more comment, I just wanted to compliment Bruce and Cliff again, is that these recommendations are really in line with what Urban Land Institute recommended the Cloverdale Council do over 12 years ago. We need to build our tax base, and we need to get some development in downtown, and I really think that this is a, you've made some good recommendations to help us, you know, improve our tax base in downtown so that we can provide essential services to our residents. And we, this was good advice over 10 years ago, it's good advice now, and, yeah, I'd like to see us, if we can, if we need to separate the discussion between downtown core and transit-oriented development in order to move forward, I'd like to see us do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. That's actually the kind of point that I was getting, or asking about, is how do we separate this from other properties?
Other properties in different...
That in-town, other TOD properties, they would be, fall under these regulations, correct?
Right, I mean, there's...
So, how do we separate those two? So that you don't get 45 units instead of 30 on a piece of property?
Well, maybe, maybe the, sorry, through the chair, if I may, maybe the consultant could put the zoning map up again, so we can see that this is a really, downtown core is a discrete area, and that's, and just limit, limit the discussion to downtown core, and then have a separate discussion on TOD.
Great idea, thank you.
Just for clarification, the ordinance before you tonight addresses changes to both the downtown commercial zoning district as well as the TOD zoning district.
And the office.
They're all included, it's all inclusive. Of course, council can, as suggested by Councilmember Bagby, you know, break out your discussion and set different density standards for, say, downtown commercial versus TOD. You can do that, and that's actually identified in the use table, it has specific type requirements and certain density requirements that pertain to both. There's a lot of consistency between those two zoning districts. In a lot of regard, they're very similar. Of course, the TOD zoning district came later as part of developing the priority development area and planning for, you know, potential additional transit uses within our community. But I think prior to that, a lot of those TOD zoned properties in the downtown would have been zoned downtown commercial, but that they were rezoned to reflect the possibility of greater mixed-use development. And I think the discussion around density is very, very relevant. The key issue, I think, that's driving the discussion is how affordable housing projects can apply for density bonuses and what impact it has on the overall density. Where you tend to see the greatest impact of density bonuses is on larger parcel sizes. Where you tend to find those larger parcel sizes are going to be on the TOD zoned properties on Ostero. Not, if we, for example, don't take into consideration the Times Square property or Citrus Fair, which is also zoned TOD. Where you look at downtown, they're much smaller lots, they range typically from a quarter acre to a third of an acre. That's where, I think, from an economic perspective, a feasibility perspective, does increased densities really make sense, because it enables a developer to build a project that is going to have a performa, is going to work economically and also address the parking requirements. But I think where council's concerned is, on those larger parcels where you're increasing density, what impact that may have on affordable housing projects. There may be an opportunity for us to look at, do you want to carve out some specific provisions as it relates to affordable housing projects within the TOD? So that may be something that councils may want to, to give some consideration around. But I think as a starting point, maybe looking at the, looking at the use table, looking specifically at the downtown commercial zoning, walking through that, and then moving over to TOD, might be something council would like to do.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Bagby, anything else before we open up to public?
And Mayor, if I could just jump in, Mayor, just a quick comment. And this is related to Councilmember Paula's comment regarding height. And, you know, everything's correct, David, you're correct. However, I think that height is something that can also be waived, just simply if it's preventing, can be waived, you can waive the height limit if it prevents the, let's say, the developer from building the number of units that they are entitled to with the density bonus. Now, it may not happen just practically in downtown, but I believe that there is a, and looking at it, it's very specific, and it depends on the facts, of course, that height is sometimes something that is, something that's waived. So I just wanted to point that out, because Councilmember Paula, your recollection is correct, but, but again, it has to be something that's preventing them from building the amount of units that they're able to build. But that's, we would have to look at the specifics of that situation, and downtown, it doesn't really, I think what you were hearing from Bruce and from Kevin is, that the probability of that happening downtown is very slim, as far as to encounter a project like that, that would require it.
Thank you, Jose. Jill?
I don't see anybody with their hands raised, but we have some of it back, and I don't know if it's because Bruce is sharing his screen and I can't see them?
Let me stop now.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we still have people. Thank you, Bruce.
Well, we're officially opening public hearing. I had seen a couple of hands before.
We have them back.
Okay, good.
Yeah, they're here. Okay. So Claudia, you're first up.
Excuse me? I see a hand, like Claudia Klow.
Thank you, Claudia, please go ahead.
Okay, I lost my screen, I can't see you anymore, but I, my name is Claudia Klow, I'm a resident of Cloverdale, and I have a Cloverdale business here for 30 years. And as the city studies and works on the Cloverdale zoning and how it will work in the future, I would like to request that the council direct the planning staff to consider an amendment to the current hotel-motel linked stay to a maximum of seven days. In a typical season, one motel currently houses 30 to 50 ag workers under contract with a farm labor contractor. And many cities around the state of California have been forced to address this issue, because it clearly can have a drastic effect on the city, its revenue and TOD tax, and the cohesiveness of a community. of a community. When you put the use of this motel to this type of use, it's not a good use in our downtown district. And it's a wasted opportunity for this motel that's in the heart of our downtown. These agricultural workers deserve better living conditions than this, their employer should be providing them a better standing, standard of housing. This is just deplorable. Anyway, the other thing is that in this alleyway approaching the motel, they are developing a cookhouse. Does zoning allow for this commercial kitchen in this narrow alley? Where are they going to put the garbage? Do they have water? You know, we're in a drought, you know, restaurants have to have water permits. What about the sewer? Are they, is all of that up to standards for the meals that they're going to be cooking for these people? What about the electrical? I spoke to one contractor there, I don't know, maybe it was a couple of years ago now, and he said that the house, he didn't think that that unit, there was enough power going into it, and he didn't know where he'd get it. Is there more than one exit to this little building? It's only about 200 square feet. I see, I've heard that it has a building permit, but I don't see anything attached to the building. And if it is going to feed 30 to 50 people, what about the deliveries to the, you know, like a restaurant? I've had a restaurant, I know, you know, if deliveries are going to be coming down that alley. This cookhouse, regardless of what has been said, is there to prepare three meals a day for these workers, which I said, you know, 30 to 50, I've seen them. Is this the proper use? Is this what we want our downtown use, you know, is it zoned for this? Do we want it used for this? Have the neighbors been notified of this usage? And one thing that really bothers me is why would we let a big business sadly place these workers in the heart of our downtown, kind of stealthily? They've stealthily done this, when they have thousands of acres to build a legitimate farm worker housing on that is up to the standards that these workers deserve. And that's why I have to say thank you for your time.
Thank you, Claudia.
Yeah.
Okay, next is Nina Hentet.
Hi, Nina, can you hear us?
Thank you, I think I'm unmuted. Good evening, councilmembers, city staff, audience, and interested residents of Cloverdale. I just have a couple of questions regarding the downtown zoning changes that we're talking about tonight. And none of these changes preclude, I mean, in order for them to happen, for example, the Cloverdale Boulevard East parcel or project that's anticipated or could happen, that is predicated on the fact that that property owner is selling the property, correct? I mean, it's not like eminent domain where the city or developer would come in and seize it or take it over, anything like that.
No.
Am I right?
You are right.
Because I know my phone's going to be ringing tomorrow, oh, I probably should also say I'm with the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce, and my phone will be ringing tomorrow. So those are just things that, I mean, I totally believe in densely, dense, a dense and productive and viable and livable downtown. I think that's what we all want, but I think it happens the way it organically happens. I just don't want people that have existing leases and investments in their properties thinking that the city or some other entity is going to, or the state is going to seize those properties and make this all happen overnight. So that's pretty much what I have to say. And I also have been working with Claudia Klow regarding the motel in question, and I think that whatever happens there, the light needs to shine clearly on that.
Thank you, Nina, I appreciate that.
I'd just like to make a comment on what was said. Just to clarify, I just want to be real clear, because this came up, I know, a while back. The schematics are just examples, they are not proposals, there's nothing the city's considering on those. It would be up to the landowner and a developer to submit plans to the city. So I just want to make that really clear to the public. This is not something that's being considered at this time by the city, nor is it being proposed by the city. It's an example of what may happen if the property owner and if a contractor submitted plans to the city for consideration. That's all, thank you.
Through the mayor?
Please, go ahead.
Through the chair, if I may? Yeah, that it's only possible if we approve the changes this evening.
That's true, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Madam Cruz.
Okay, I have two issues to address here. One is that if the community and the business owners are so concerned about housing for ag workers, they need to start organizing and talk to the wine growers. They have several organizations, at least two organizations that I know of, that this has to be addressed to. So, you know, it becomes an issue when it impacts certain businesses. Until this happens, it's not an issue. So if we're truly concerned about ag workers, who are the heart and the hands of the industry of one country, perhaps it is time that people start organizing about that concern. Number two, I think it is time that we start considering, what is a vibrant downtown? And what does a vibrant downtown mean to everybody who has investments in the city? What additional activity can we get in town? How is this really going to help all of the businesses? And it has been seen throughout the world that a vibrant downtown does improve their economic and financial growth over time. So that's just a comment, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Jill, could you give the next public comment?
Leanne, Fabian, you're next.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi. My concern is that the downtown area that's being targeted has many businesses, like retail spaces that are vacant. So how do they expect to build new ones with residential spaces on top of it and fill down? It's not, it's not happening. And that's, there's no reason why our town should have any vacant retail locations in our downtown area. It's precious. So there's that.
Thank you, Leanne. Any more hands, Jill?
There's still a hand raised by Nina Hentet.
Okay. Probably an old one.
Maybe. I think she removed it here. Nope.
Okay. Audience, please.
I am Richard St. Angelo, I live at 218 Live Oak Drive. I'd just like to address the proposed increase of 20 units per acre, or 30 units per acre that I think Councilmember Wolder addressed too. I would be really wary of unintended consequences. He mentioned the housing and parking at Garden Circle Way. I surveyed that recently, there are about 40 units there, and all the curbside parking within the complex is taken, about 50 vehicles. In addition, there are about 20 vehicles parked nose to tail continuously on Cloverdale Boulevard from Tarman Drive all the way up to--
Hillview.
South Street. Just chock full. And I think that we should wait to see how the proposed development on Asti Way shakes out, because I have a great concern in there as well. My calculations were, I'm an architect, my calculations were that since the parking requirement was one of those concessions that was granted, went down from city mandated 193 to 99, that those 94 parking spaces will actually, parking spaces will actually be occupied on Asti Drive illegally in the bike lane, stretching all the way from Cloverdale Boulevard on the south up to the northern terminus of the project, which is at Lake Street. I think that's what's going to occur. I think we should wait and see before we do something as fundamental as allowing an increase in density that would be subject to a density bonus, which I think would even exacerbate the problem. I think it's Pollyannish to think that providing transit-oriented development project is going to actually get people out of their cars, because there is no actual work to absorb all the Cloverdale residents, the majority commute. I would challenge any of you to say that you use public transportation regularly or even infrequently, because there are no destinations to access without a car, unless you're fortunate to walk downtown to the concert, or else to restaurant, or to a very limited retail, because there's so many closed storefronts. So here again, please consider the proposal to increase the transit-oriented density from 20 to 30 after we have experience with the current project, which has been approved. I oppose it, but I don't have any thing to say at this point beyond that. Be aware of unintended consequences, and be respectful of the people who need to use their cars to go to work and to shop, and even to drive the kids to school, even to go from here to San Rosa Junior College. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Please come forward.
Kevin Costoff, resident at 605 Lake Street. Once again, I'm going to bring up the point of last night with the Planning Commission. We were in the discussion regarding the TOD district. I guess I have to apologize as a citizen of Cloverdale that I missed it years ago when that parcel of land was turned into a TOD part for the zoning, and now we have to deal with it. Part of it is, I liked the recommendation earlier where I think you need to separate out the difference between the downtown district and the TOD, because most of the TOD is listed close to the downtown, but there are two parcels that are not, and that is the parcel that's on 401 Asti and the one to Citrus Fair. Right now, there is already a density bonus being allowed to the 401, so we know if they were going to increase it to 30, you know they're going to get the bonus density. Now, it's funny in those things, because Mayor Lands, thank you, you said one thing, Cloverdale is a little town. It's, you know, we don't see growth happening too much too fast around here. We want to do the best for Cloverdale. And right now, we're already putting a housing unit out basically in rural Cloverdale, on the east side of the freeway, 401 Asti. And you need to respect Cloverdale for what we are. We've been a small town for a long time, and we're going to continue to be a small town. We only have so much space to grow, and it's not growing all that fast. We have to still be considerate with that increased density, all the schools, the environment, the healthcare, all those issues still come into play. And I want to ask, or at least to talk about Bruce, Bruce made a comment about having the TOD district existing character of the area. Now, we already are knowing that the building that's going on 401 is not existing to the character of the area. The character of the area is rural. There's trees, there's land, this whole complex is not coming into that character. So I really recommend that you separate those two out so that we can have further discussions on how this is going to work on the 20 to 30 units, because right now, it doesn't work for the TOD district. I'm not even sure really in the beginning of how this piece of property, especially the 401, got included into it. So at that part too, is I also worry about, we talked about the other restrictions, Kevin, regarding how other restrictions can hold up projects, whether they're height, density, or so forth. But then I have to go back to Joe talking about how, in the end, state law supersedes everything. So how do we balance that? Right now, the balance is all in your hands and the Planning Commission's hands, and so far, what we're seeing with the 401 Asti Road project, we're not doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Seeing no more hands and no more comments from the public.
There are--
Oh, yes, one more. Oh, there is another one, is it still Nina's? Or is there another one?
There are two, so we have Dave Holt and Nina is back on.
Okay, let's do Dave, please, if you don't mind. Good evening, Dave, can you hear us?
Dave, you're on.
Can you now hear me?
We can hear you now.
We can hear you a bit.
Great, thank you. So I would like to, I'll come back to Nina's comment of downtown development happening organically. We can sit here and pontificate on downtown for quite a while. I have a building down there, the old library, which will turn 100 years old in this year, 2022. My wife and I have it. And when we put that up for rent, not very many people showed up. One of the constraints is being handled in this with the changes to the zoning code in terms of what is required for plot plan reviews and what's permitted and conditional use permits, but I don't think it goes far enough. I also think that the parking issues are a red herring. We could talk about parking issues in downtown, about, you know, spaces per square foot, spaces per unit. We don't have anything in downtown. We have room. As one of the local Realtors says, "Look at Friday Night Live, it gets a lot crowded, we get a lot of cars, and everyone gets along." Let's hope we can have a parking problem. Again, I'm speaking regarding downtown commercial. I like what I see in terms of the changes proposed, however, I do not believe that they go far enough. I would much, I would, in terms of parking, I would ask you folks to go down and look at the parking lot on Railroad. I believe that that parking lot, it is a blight on the community, luckily it's on Railroad, not on the Boulevard. That parking lot was a requirement for the office building and residential units at the corner of Railroad and something down there, Mulberry, maybe.
It's east, Dave.
Okay. It's, yeah, if you look at that parking lot, that was a requirement of our parking regulations. Let's forget about that discussion and move on to what's important on getting businesses in downtown. And that would entail letting things happen as opposed to try and make up a code that will bring it, because people aren't showing up. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Jill, you want to put Nina back up?
Yes.
Nina, you have about one more minute of your three minutes.
Hi, everybody, finally, sorry, I get my buttons on my laptop at home kind of confused. So I've, you've probably often heard me said, say one-on-one, that Cloverdale doesn't have a parking problem. If we did have a parking problem, we'd have a whole lot of other wonderful things to go along with it. But I, I'm just, I like, I like density downtown, I like building up versus building out, and I think if it'll happen, it probably is not going to happen in the way that the drawings are showing, it's going to happen the way that it's meant to happen. I don't know that some developer's going to come in and buy that property on the east that it would actually displace three businesses. I might have miscounted, no, maybe even more with the post office. And anyway, so I just think that, I think that we need to prepare-- And anyway, so I just think that, I think that we need to prepare. We need to make sure that we're not restrictive for the wrong reasons, but I, but I think it's kind of a pipe dream. I mean, I've been here for 21 years and I keep thinking, you know, the floodgates are going to open and they haven't opened for a lot of reasons, but, I mean, I'm kind of okay with that. But I know we have to have a broader and stronger tax base in order to give the people that are here services that they, they demand. So thanks.
All right, thank you, Nina. I see Al Myers is a new hand raised. That wasn't Al.
You don't think?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Hi, thank you. Sorry it took me a minute to get on there. I had no intention of speaking on this, but thank you, council members and audience. And I just wanted to speak real quickly to the one statement that was made that there is plenty of retail space and office space downtown. As someone who has a business in town, has had a business in town for three years and has yet not been able to secure a building in town, I would say that, yeah, there are two vacant buildings in the downtown area that I know of, but one's 2,000 square feet, the other one's 3,000 square feet. And not a lot of small businesses are what have you are going along with getting buildings that are that large. I just wanted to make that comment because I am still searching for a suitable office downtown, but we have to find one. So thank you for letting me voice that.
Thank you, Al. Appreciate it. Mr. San Angelo, if you want to come back up, you have about 45 seconds of your three minutes from earlier.
I'd like to address the downtown district, run the same thing. If we increase the density in the downtown district, I don't think there'll be enough parking to service whatever occupancies are in that increased density. I think it's logical to assume the extra parking will spill onto the streets and will impact the quality of life of Cloverdale residents. Here again, people in Cloverdale can't function here without a car. And I would expect any of the apartments that have more than one bedroom to have more than two cars. And where are we going to put them? Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Same hand. So we're good, Jill?
So we have, Dave Holt has a hand up, whether intentional or not.
I don't know. It's find out.
No, I think it was a not.
Perfect. So with that, we will close public comment and bring it back to the dais. Councilmember Bagby, would you like to start?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, you've had a lot of really great input, great public input. And, you know, I really take to heart what our chamber director and Dave Holt, who's actually steeped in real estate, like he's attempting to retire as a, an appraiser. And so I, and I appreciate Al's perspective too, as someone who's a business owner who's just searching for the appropriate office space. And we do have, we do have inventory, but we have kind of, it's like opening up my grandma's little quilt box. We have, you know, some pieces that are way too big and bunch of little tiny pieces that are, that are too small and, you know, maybe not a lot of what is right and suitable for certain kinds of businesses. The other challenge we have is we just need to get more bodies in downtown so that we can support the businesses that we have. And I really, one of the comments really resonated with me about, you know, having organic development, but the problem is, is that I think that what we paid our consultants to look into for us and what was recommended by ULI over a decade ago is that in order for some of this development to happen organically, we need to stop pouring bleach on it. And our requirements are pouring bleach on the process. So by loosening up, you know, some of these requirements, and I'm talking specifically about the downtown core, they're pointing to specific things that will make projects pencil out. And we already know that we need lost projects because of our parking requirements because the project doesn't pencil out. So I think it's, this is a very simple decision for, at least for the downtown core portion of the discussion. And I'm not suggesting pulling the items completely apart. I'm suggesting just discussing them in very, you know, discussing them in specific contents, discussing downtown core concerns and then discussing TOD discussions. But, you know, right now, I'm going to focus my comments on downtown core. We need to stop pouring bleach on an organic process so that we can make those, make the requirements reasonable and get some traction and attract some development in the downtown because, you know, and I'll harken back to another thing that I really gleaned from the Urban Land Institute is that development in our downtown and getting, getting more people, getting more bodies in downtown, supporting local businesses, not being dependent on tourism or Friday Night Live or intermittent stuff, but really having bodies downtown that are buying coffee, buying lunch, going to Delian and Sage, going to, you know, frequenting our downtown retail businesses and our restaurants. It's the, it's the starter motor for our entire economy, citywide. And so, you know, I, I think that, and I also take it to heart what Dave Holt was saying is like, maybe these requirements don't go far enough. And a great example of that is that development at the corner of East and Railroad and the parking requirements that were, were put on that building. They're, any reasonable person can tell it, it was just too much. So let's learn from an existing project on the edge of our downtown and let's loosen up on those parking requirements since there's other requirements. Some of the concerns about, you know, oh, are they going to be able to, you know, take advantage of density bonuses? We already know, it's very clear. An affordable project or low-income housing project, very unlikely, very unlikely to go into the, into that DTC area. So let's ease off and on some of those requirements so that we can get some traction, attract some development and get our economic engine moving.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Councilmember Cruz, any comments?
Well, you know, people who come to wine country know that they're coming to small towns and small towns normally don't have a lot of parking. Look at the best that's in Hillsborough. Look, uh, look at Geyserville, that's not even an incorporated community. And they have vibrant restaurant lives there all the time. People walk, sometimes a block or more. Every time we go there, we park at the fire station just to go for the coffee house. I mean, people have a bad habit of thinking that they have to find parking in front of the business, just like the estate does, you know? Only estate parking. Well, it shouldn't be only one business park. And it's ongoing. It's not like if you're going to park there for three, four hours. I mean, come on. And if we continue to put some restriction on parking time, it would be fine. I mean, that railroad parking lot is always empty. Nobody wants to walk. And walking is healthy. I wish I could walk at this point, but anyway. Thank you, and that's my comment. I don't think we need to be so worried about parking.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Councilmember Paula?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of comments that were said, I just want to touch on them. You know, the city tends to get a black eye for a lot of things that are out of their control. You know, a lot of things have happened because I've been on the council a long time and one of the things was economic development. And we made some pretty good strides in the early days when we had redevelopment agencies that was taken away just prior to the recession. Then we went through a major recession as a city, trying to just maintain public services was really a difficult task. A lot of businesses suffered. And then as we tried to rebuild it, we get all these new laws that come down and I mentioned about the state laws that supersede all our ordinances and they're forcing things down our throat that we have no control over. And I say that because the city of Cloverdale, in conjunction with the League of California Cities and all 480-plus cities, opposed most of these laws that the legislators literally put our feelings aside and all the concerns that you're raising, were raising, that are impacting our quality of life and said, they passed it. And so here we are, struggling with how do we move forward to meet these concerns without ending up in, you know, violating state law, which is a lose. I mean, you could have all the right reasons, but if you're in violation of law, you're in violation of law. And so it's been really a difficult juggling act. So I hear the concerns and I share them, but I'm just at a loss is how you, short of changing the law. And that's the best thing we can do is, you know, we need to get a hold of our legislators and let them know that we're not, we're not happy and that they need to hear that directly, not only from city government, but from residents. With that said, you know, a couple of things, I really agree that we need to do something to kickstart our economy. I think that a lot of good points were made. I think we should focus on the downtown core. I'm not so happy about having the TOD all lumped in. I think we should just focus the downtown core because that's really what we're talking about. And the other thing is, I'm, I mentioned, if I heard you right, Bruce, you said no residents on the ground floor along Cloverdale Boulevard, but I'd like to see that expanded include First Street, which from the Cloverdale Boulevard to Main Street, because I don't think there should be residential on the ground floor along, that's the key business area in those areas. So I just pretty much would like to have that added. So that's my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I don't have much to add. I, I agree with Councilmember Bagby. We should split the TOD out of the downtown and look at them separately. And, you know, this is an exercise on infill. You know, how do we get more residents in the downtown to support our businesses? And I think overall, it's good exercise. By no means are we in the process of working with any real estate owner to sell their property to a developer. I mean, that's just, no. We're just looking at how can we infill at some point. So I'd like to see the TOD broken out separately and go from there.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Guadalupe, I'd like to hear from you, somebody that is new to our town, just only because you're young and someone that has a long time ahead of them here. What do you think? What do you want to see in our future?
All right. Well, I've been listening in, listening in and trying to catch up with you guys. Obviously, this is all very new to me, so I'm trying to like figure it out, sort it out, but from what I'm hearing and like trying to figure out if we want to expand Cloverdale, keep it a small town. I've always been used to small-town Cloverdale, but I definitely believe in the importance of supporting the local businesses and then that's something I've been hearing, Spinn mentioned, how there's space in the downtown area that isn't necessarily being used sometimes because the spaces are too small or too big, but it's just been interesting to see that perspective because sometimes I will just see businesses that are, or fronts that are closed and I just wonder like, oh, I wonder why nothing's there. So it's good to have this insight. I'll say that, yeah.
Thank you so much. I just have a few questions, pretty simple. I don't know the difference between the pedestrian-oriented retail and the general retail. How is that broken out? On the list here for zoning districts, they were listed under the commercial uses and they had different comments and changes.
Just, there's definitions, but generally the pedestrian is more of a storefront behind the back of a sidewalk where you would walk up and maybe park a block or two away, like a downtown setting versus a retail that might be more auto-oriented where there would be its own parking lot in front. Just generally speaking, yeah.
I had the same concerns about the residential on the ground floor as Councilmember Paula. I worry about having houses or apartments built in the downtown corridor, even though it's not on the Boulevard. When you start to get into First Street, areas like that, that could be used as commercial, even Second Street, there's an open lot there and I worry about that. And so I would, I would branch it out to, you know, within a block of Cloverdale Boulevard, not including the, you know, Main Street and Commercial, I believe are the two on the east and west side of the Boulevard, not including those, but the side streets to get to them, First, Second, Third Streets like that. I am also very concerned about the TOD changes just because of what can come. And so I really want to separate that out from the downtown commercial. I like that idea and I like, I love the ideas that are being presented of what it could look like, the renderings, things like that. I love retail with housing above it. That's perfect. I, my one concern that I had is when we start to go into the 30 per acre, the second rendering had 800-square-foot apartments. That's very small, very, very small. And so that's almost like a hotel room or less. So we have to be very careful that what we do here doesn't create something that people can't be proud of. Affordable and being proud of where you are are two separate things and I want to make sure that we're not defeating ourselves by creating something that's affordable, but it's not something that people can love.
Any other comments?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll tell you, 800 square feet was exactly the size of my first apartment in Sausalito and it had a pretty killer view. I was pretty proud of it. And I've been in, most hotel rooms have, at least like especially in Sacramento and Los Angeles, they've all been bigger. So you're right. But I mean, you know, we also, it's like we can't just put our own expectations or our own values. There are plenty of people who really enjoy, you know, tiny houses, living in studio apartments, you know, 800-square-foot apartments. There, and that doesn't mean that it's your forever home. It could be that, you know, that's the place that you, that you land as a visiting nurse or you land as a firefighter or something like that until you're able to buy a home. So, I mean, I just, you know, I, it might be hard for some people to imagine 800 square feet, but I've lived in it. And yeah, when you're commuting every day and you come home, plenty of room for your bed, big screen TV, a small dog. It's very livable and it could also be, you know, very elegant and high-end or it could be very humble. So, you know, I just think, I just hope that, you know, we're all open-minded enough to understand that different people at different times in their lives have different dates and 800 square foot is not anything to not be proud of.
I completely agree. I grew up in a single wide trailer, so I know how it is to live in small spaces and confined areas, so.
Yeah, my dorm room was probably per square feet is the most I've ever paid for rent in my, in my life and it was, it was tiny, so.
No, I agree. I just wanted to make that known that my opinion is that I, I would like to get as much as we can for our people for the dollar.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could, just one follow-up. Going back to the, just going back to the motel concern, I know the city staff is working, looking into that situation, so I don't think it's anything we need to take up today, but I would like to make sure that the city staff does look into that. Sounds like there may be some, some, some things going on that may not be permitted and if that's the case, then certainly we need to take a look at it through code enforcement. So, thank you.
At a point of clarification on separating the downtown and the TOD, is that related strictly to density or, because there's a number of changes proposed for the TOD that we think makes sense in terms of the allowed uses and eliminating use permits for things like retail?
I haven't heard anyone on the council speak about anything other than density. I think that, so in my, I'll give you my opinion first since I'm already speaking. Everything else looked fine to me. The parking size change, things along those lines, that was fine, but it was the density that I was worried about. Any other council members would like to speak on that?
No, no, that's. No, no, that's exactly it.
Mr. Mayor, my hand has been up.
Go ahead, Councilmember Cruz.
Thank you. I do agree we need to separate TOD from TOT. And another comment that I want to make is, you know, we already have this mixed-use at the Plank Building. We have apartments upstairs, we have businesses at the bottom, and parking anybody really realizes there's anybody living up there? We have a whole lot of housing downtown already. And it is substantial, for the most part. So I think it's about time that we start looking at dignified housing in downtown Cloverdale, and not garages that have been converted, or places that get flooded and become mudholes when it rains. So it's doable and it's workable, and the ideal is to have housing on the second floor. That's always the ideal when it comes to this type of development, urban corridors. That's my comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Councilmember Bagby, did you want to comment on anything else to clarify for Kevin?
Oh, yeah, just to clarify, no, I would support, if we're specifically talking about downtown core, I definitely support the higher density. And let the market choose, let it happen organically, like our chamber director and Dave Holt said. I don't think, I would rather see the higher density allowed and find out what pencils out. So I think it's, I think ultimately, it's going to end up being most market-rate housing in downtown. And we will definitely benefit from having different-sized units available for different people, and allow them to make the choices as to where and how they want to live.
Anyone else?
So, just to go a little bit further, so the people know that on this list, there was things like changing the parking spot size, just about a sixth bigger or more space per spot. And then the height requirement with a setback for the third floor, that looked nice. I would, you know, the height requirement stayed the same, but it set the top row back six feet in here, which it didn't have before. And I thought that that was great, because it blocked, it stops the blocking in the huge apartment building-looking buildings downtown. So I just wanted to clarify for people that are listening, that what we're not talking about is a few things that really make it more easy on the eyes, I'll say. Kevin, please.
What we could do is keep the TOD at 20, increase the downtown to 30, make the other amendments regarding first-floor residential, and then bring it back for reintroduction. I don't know, David, if that's what you were thinking.
Well, I think there's a couple of options for council. You could continue the public hearing, allow staff to make the modifications, revisions, and bring it back for continued review by council. The other option is to direct staff to make the changes directed tonight, and then we could bring it back for second reading at your next meeting or a subsequent meeting. It really depends on how comfortable you feel with the outline provided by your community development director. I think what we heard council say is there's real concern around density, and council could direct us tonight to go ahead and keep it at the 20, not make that specific change in the use table. And what I'm referring to is Exhibit B in your packet. There's 29 pages to that exhibit, which is, consists of Chapter 1805 of your zoning ordinance, and really honing in on Table 18.05030, which provides the permitted uses. I think council supports the idea of revising the use table to allow some of the retail uses and other uses that I think you'd want to see, such as a coffee shop in a TOD zoning district. But really, addressing the concern about a high-density residential development and potential density bonuses in that TOD zoning district. So it's kind of an option for council and what your comfort level is. If you'd like us to bring this back, I would recommend, you know, continuing the public hearing, we can do that, and then you can allow for additional review or direct staff. Go ahead and introduce the ordinance tonight with the direction you've provided, and to bring it back for second reading.
Thank you, David. What if we wanted to use TOD for anything other than transit-oriented? Is there things in there for that? You know, what if, what if a home, a property owner wanted to use it as a parking lot or a park? Is there things that we would have to do? Because, only because I don't know, and it just popped in my head that I'm thinking about things.
And that's a great question, Mayor. Again, I would point to the attachment. Page seven does refer to accessory uses within the downtown commercial and TOD. And it says, "Other uses similar to and no more objectionable than uses identified above as determined by the Planning Commission." So for those types of uses, they would be conditionally permitted. And so that provides a mechanism for review of really a whole set of uses that, you know, aren't necessarily defined within the use table. And obviously, if they were, you know, clearly outside the use of the TOD or downtown commercial, you may not even consider them for a use permit. But this provides some flexibility, I think, to address your question, Mayor, around, you know, some other uses that we may not have thought of, that may come before the commissioning council.
Thank you, sir.
Public uses are allowed in all the zoning districts with a use permit?
That's the line I didn't see that I was looking for earlier, and I forgot to ask. Thank you. Well, no other comments? I don't see anything from our two council members online, so we will close the public hearing, or continue the public hearing until the 26th at our next meeting?
Or as David mentioned, we could make the changes.
You can introduce it tonight as amended, and then bring it back for second reading. That's quicker. Or we can make the changes, talk about it, and introduce it at the next meeting.
It's really, I think the difference would be if, that we're focusing on the specific changes to the density. If council was really seeking a host of other changes to TOD, or are not supporting the revisions that we are offering tonight in the ordinance.
Councilmember Bagby or Cruz, if either of you are against having them amend it and then bring it back as a second reading?
I'd support that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, yeah, that's great, since it's a very simple change, we'll speed it along.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, when we get the second draft in the next agenda packet, if you could different color-code those, so we could see those changes?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could make a comment? If we're going to be introducing the ordinance for its first reading tonight with simple changes, if maybe Kevin, you can identify exactly where those changes are going to be for the record. That way, we have it in the record, and we can introduce the exact ordinance that's going to be introduced with the changes.
Happy to do so. We're going to amend the density for downtown from 20 to 30 units per acre. We're going to keep the TOD at 20, and then we're going to amend the section that allows first-floor residential to not be allowed within one block of Cloverdale Boulevard and not along First Street. Is that what I heard?
First and Second Street.
First and Second?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? So can we bring a map up again for downtown? I just want to clarify how far east and west on First or, and or Second Street we're talking about?
Between Cloverdale Boulevard.
Are we still talking about what we have as downtown core on the map?
Third Street to Lake is usually the downtown core. Main to Commercial.
Yeah, so it was just the portions of First and Second Street that go between Commercial and the Boulevard, or Main and the Boulevard?
Because, I'm sorry, aren't we already, isn't some of that already office multifamily? Because that's in the light purple? Because I think we might be overstepping.
I see what you're saying, Councilmember Bagby. We're looking at it here. I'm looking at the different areas.
Yeah. First.
Well, my concern was First Street between Main and Cloverdale Boulevard. That's...
Would we want to do the same?
Okay, so First Street between Main, it's all peach, so that's why I was confused. So, yeah, can you explain to me what you weren't happy with and what change would represent?
What I requested, that ground-floor residents not be allowed in the, between First Street, on First Street, between Cloverdale Boulevard and Main Street.
Gotcha. So, I'm not clear if it's designate, if it's downtown commercial, if that's an actual change. Bruce or Kevin, can you explain?
The current amendment is to allow resident, ground-floor residential, currently ground-floor residential.
Like, let's say if we were on First Street, we're facing First Street, and, okay...
Currently, you cannot provide ground-floor residential on any street in downtown.
Yeah, on, facing, but you could develop, but we could develop behind it.
Yeah, it could be developed behind, you're right.
Okay.
Or it could develop on the second story.
On the second story. I'm just not sure how it changes what we currently have. That's where I was at.
So, Councilmember Bagby, what I see, like, if I'm looking at this, and we can talk about it by businesses almost, next to Dahlia and Sage, there's the empty lot that Eagle Tech owns. I wouldn't, I would not want to...
Well, okay, so that's not First Street, that's Second Street.
That's Second Street, and that's between Main and the Boulevard. I would hate to see a four-story residence with residents on the ground floor go next door to Dahlia and Sage.
I gotcha. Okay, so it's not what, okay, so I gotcha.
So, my, my...
And so, yeah, if we are consistent, if we were consistent, we would say that would have to front, we'd have to front the retail, but they could have residential behind it and/or above.
Correct, correct. That's not ground floor.
Okay, thank you, that helps.
I think, maybe Bruce can clarify the difference between ground-floor residential and ground-floor residential with street frontage? Because I think part of the changes that we were assessing in this ordinance was allowing for ground-floor retail, but it might be at the back or the rear of the building, and to have parking be access from the rear. So that way, I think the intent is still to enliven the street with retail uses.
Yeah, but he specified on Cloverdale Boulevard, okay?
Right, so you...
Yeah, if I could, maybe I could just explain, the intention behind it is that there are some very good new development types that have, such as townhouses that have entries, that are not inappropriate for downtown areas. However, Cloverdale is such an intense retail environment, it's not, it's not so appropriate there. There may be other streets, and I take the argument that First and Second may be those streets where it's also an intense retail environment, and it's not appropriate for residential to be facing the street in those streets. But we are trying to make development as feasible as possible, and allowing for ground-floor residential may actually enable a project to happen that may not happen otherwise. So it's a matter of degree, what streets you want to really limit that. I would encourage you to allow it to happen where it's not absolutely necessary.
And just, and that doesn't necessarily mean that it can't be appealed, or somebody could ask that the zoning be changed at any particular point, so, I mean...
Yes, there is the planned unit development process, which, you know, you can negotiate different things.
Yeah, we may want to look at permitted plot plan versus conditional use. If you, yeah, if we can bring that page up, Kevin, on the screen.
Uh, let's see.
I'd tell you what page of the packet it's on, but there are no page numbers.
I am looking for, I'm sorry, Councilmember, what was the actual...
It's Page 5, I believe, Bruce.
Page what?
5, I believe.
Five of 29.
Five of the packet, but it's, yeah.
Do you, you don't have a page number of the actual ordinance?
Yeah, it's the fifth page is the one that shows all the, Table 1805030.
18, okay.
I think it's the first page of tables. Yeah.
That...
There you go.
That's it.
Uh, I think we need to move to residential, is that, no, I'm sorry, yeah, here's residential The change is this number six?
There's another one though here.
No, it's not, sorry.
So Page 7, there you go. Bruce, if you can pull that one up, it has the OR for residential use. Yeah, there you go.
There, that's it.
Yep, that's it.
So right now, we've got, like, am I on the right page, Mayor? Above a permitted commercial or office use permitted and first-floor plot plan?
Yes, ma'am, and then you see the multifamily residential, where it says First Floor. Maybe we can clarify that. Or a single-family house, they all kind of go along that line right there.
Okay.
So Kevin, can you clarify? I mean...
I don't know if I understand the question.
So the question is, would we be, would they be allowed to build townhouses on First Street or Second Street under this new...
So, as it's written now, they would not be able to do residential facing Cloverdale Boulevard, and that's...
Correct, but on the side streets between Main and Commercial, they would.
Right, so we could expand that. Bruce, do you know where that says that? I remember reading it, but I can't remember exactly.
I am trying to...
It's not in the table. But we can expand that to include no ground-floor residential...
Kevin, look at the last paragraph here. Residential uses are allowed. I'll read the amendment. On Cloverdale Boulevard, if above a first story or behind a commercial building, or on other streets in the DTC zoning district, at ground floor and above.
Kevin, 180505, go on the...
I can't get my... Yeah, but that's okay. Do you want to... That can be did there. Go ahead. So it sounds to me like council is not wanting to have ground-floor residential or townhome-style homes in that downtown corridor, or on, there's portions that are the OR zoning on the corners of First and Second Street, on Main and Commercial, on those corners, that could possibly be... Am I correct?
Well, not frontage.
But still, you have, say, Second Street next door to Dahlia and Sage, that is an open lot. Would you want townhomes there, or would you want it to continue to be a type of commercial business?
I don't know, we want commercial business, but what we're saying is, and what was discussed earlier, is that as long as it's not frontage to Second or First or Main or the Boulevard, it's okay.
Yeah, I'm looking at the table, and I'm sorry, I can't reference the page, but under downtown core, multifamily residential, on, above a permitted or commercial office space, it's permitted, which I thought that's what we were in favor of. And then on the first floor, it currently requires a plot plan.
A what plan?
A plot plan, that's what P E stands for. Yeah, plot plan. So, I mean, we, you could eliminate a plot plan, but I certainly would be open to it, and plot plan, you know, there's a little bit of a hurdle that they have to, to get over, to convince us, you know, why we would like, why we'd be in favor of the design.
Well, I wonder, just in terms of the way forward, I wonder if it's better to think about it this way. Currently, there's a prohibition on having residential facing the street in the... in the entire DTC zone, and so the amendment would be to allow that to happen except on Cloverdale, First, Second, and whatever streets the council wants to add to that list.
I'm not sure it's much different than what is already reflected in the edits. I'm not sure it's substantially, substantially different than what you already presented us with.
I'm, I guess I'm just trying to make the point that there's already a provision in place, and we are amending it to allow residential in certain locations, and so really thinking about where that amendment should happen might be the way forward.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. And Mr. Mayor, I see that Nina does have her hand raised again.
I know, but we already closed our public comments on this one, so...
Oh, sorry.
I apologize, Nina. So it sounds to me, if you guys don't mind, it sounds like we're saying we don't want residential front-facing, first floor, First, Second, Cloverdale Boulevard.
If not more, yeah.
If not more, correct. I mean, I'd like to expand more, however, most of it already has residential or something like that on it, so it makes it difficult for me to push further.
Well, if it has, if I mean, Mr. Mayor, if it has an existing home, it's an existing non-conformant use, and it's...
Correct.
It's fine until they, yeah, until they remodel, so...
That's why I'm not pushing any further.
Yeah, I'm just going by page sixty-three, and it looks, it looks fine to me unless people want to really limit it more.
So just so I'm clear, I'm talking between Main Street and the Boulevard, but not the entire street. Okay, so I just want to be real clear. When we say First Street, Second Street, we're just talking that block, so.
That's clear.
The pink area.
Are we, are we still clear enough to bring this back as a second reading with the changes?
Well, I think the Assistant City Manager is going to read what those amendments are, because they have to be read into the record, and so we can all...
Okay, well...
Mayor, please, Mr. Mayor. You know, there's another parcel, and I think it should be from Main Street all the way over through East Third Street, uh, East Commercial Street. And the reason is, on the corner of Second and Commercial, there's a parking lot right now.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that could be developed into housing.
Well, that's, no, that's part of what we're saying, is from Main to Commercial on First and Second Street.
Okay, all right. I must have dozed off. Thank you.
No, you, no, I got it. It's been a lot and very convoluted.
Okay.
So Kevin, when you are ready, I think we're all on board, no matter how many times we say it or how many ways.
Okay, so let's see. We're going to limit the first floor commercial along Cloverdale Boulevard and along...
First floor residential.
First floor residential. What did I say? Anyway. First, we're going to not allow first floor residential on Cloverdale Boulevard...
Fronting.
Fronting Cloverdale Boulevard, and fronting Main to Commercial, and along First and Second Street.
First and Second Street, from Main to Commercial.
From Main to Commercial, okay, sorry.
Does that sound clear to everyone on council?
Yes.
I see Bruce shaking his head. That's great, thank you. Melanie, thank you. Okay.
Mayor, if we can, just to check in with the city attorney, you want to make sure that we feel comfortable with the proposed changes that we've outlined for council to be able to bring it, bring back to ordinance for second meeting.
Go ahead, Jose, if you don't mind.
So I would, I would recommend bringing up the page where the amendment's going to go, Kevin, just so we could just be very clear where it's going to go, and that way we could just have that kind of as part of the record. We're looking at what the amendment's going to be, and I think that the density amendment is easy for the, for the TOD, because it's just going, it's just leaving it alone, right? Just leaving the density in place. It's not, it's not increasing, it's leaving alone. And that, that's good, because it's not reducing density, it's just leaving, just making it very clear, leaving at what it is. That way, we don't have an SB 330 problem of reducing density anywhere. But if I could, if, if Bruce, you can do this, if you could put the page up where those changes are going to happen regarding the, the frontage regarding residential, that way everybody's very clear about where the amendment's going to go. I would appreciate that, just for the record.
This is for the density issue, correct?
Well, for both. The density issue is simple, I think, it's just looking at the, right there, right?
Yeah, that's page sixty-four.
Perfect, perfect.
And then the other one is on this page sixty-three in the ordinance. This is the ground floor frontage.
And that'll be incorporated where, in the section that was, was the section that was deleted, all the different areas?
Yes, in the multifamily residential use row.
Okay, so we'll have that, those, the, with Kevin read, that's kind of the summary of those locations in the, in the table itself, correct?
Correct.
So Jose, are we good at this point?
We are. We have, we have that in the record, and if the council wants to introduce by title only, if that's a motion that the council wants to make, the ordinance as amended, with, we have those amendments under record. So now, just to be clear, it's the amendment to the, to the first floor of the residential in this chart, and then the density references for the TOD, return them back to twenty instead of going up.
And increasing the density downtown to, from twenty to thirty.
Yes, that's, that's being left alone. It's a TOD that's being taken to twenty, correct?
Right, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and introduce the ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Cloverdale as amended, amending the Cloverdale Municipal Code Chapters eighteen point zero five, Commercial Zoning Districts, Chapter eighteen point zero nine, Special Provisions and Development Standards, and Chapter eighteen ten, Design Standards, and Chapter eighteen eleven, Parking and Loading Requirements.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Jill, when you're ready for...
You ready?
Yes.
Councilmember Paula.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Chair Walter.
Aye.
Mayor Lance.
Aye.
Thank you all for that. Do we need a five-minute break?
Yeah.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. Eight forty-two, we'll start back.
Moving into new business, G1 Discussion and Direction of Draft City Council 2022 Subcommittee, Joint Committee, and Regional Board Committee Appointments.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. The item before you tonight is a discussion and direction from Council on, in regards to your draft Subcommittee Assignments, Joint Committee, and Regional Board Assignments for 2022. At your previous Council meeting on December 8th, staff provided Council with preference worksheets that identified, or provided an opportunity for Council members to identify their preferences in terms of Subcommittee and Regional Board Assignments. Since that time, Council submitted their preferences to staff and their priority rankings, and staff compiled a worksheet identifying each of the Councilmember preferences. And then based on the criteria that staff developed, which included assigning a Subcommittee to each Councilmember based on your first preference, providing for some continuity in committee membership by having at least one member who's currently serving on a Subcommittee continuing to serve, and then last but not least, equal work sharing amongst Councilmembers as best as could be possible. What's included in your packet is an assimilation of your rankings with the City Manager's Recommendations. Really, the City Manager's Recommendations should be viewed as a starting point. It's really Council's, what we're asking for Council to do tonight is discuss those recommendations and make any adjustments as you see fit, so we can bring back the ultimate decision for your consideration at the next meeting by resolution. As part of that consideration, we also recommend Council discuss the date and time of your Subcommittee Meetings. We did hear from Council the interest in scheduling, for instance, your Public Works Subcommittee Meetings monthly versus every other month, and have included that as a recommendation in, specifically for the Public Works Subcommittee. But the, what's identified in the agenda report is the current meeting dates and times, but Council can adjust those depending on who you would like to appoint to those Subcommittees and, you know, what your preference is in terms of meeting dates and times. In addition to the Subcommittees, there's also a whole host of Regional Boards that, some of which require Council, a Councilmember be appointed to, and that's also in your packet, and it's based on your preferences. I did want to note that Councilmember Cruz did indicate there was a few Committees or Boards that City Manager recommended that you prefer not to sit on. That includes being a representative for the Senior Center as well as not representing the City on the Department of Health Committee. But other than that, there was no other changes proposed tonight to the City Manager's Recommendations. And again, the request tonight is to review those recommendations, firm up who Council would like to see be Council Representatives on Subcommittees and Regional Boards, so staff can bring that back for adoption by the Council by resolution.
Thank you, David. I think we should start with our Subcommittee Appointments and see if there's any, anything anybody wants changed from what David has recommended here for 2022. I'll start with Marta, if you are there. Councilmember Cruz, are you okay with what he has recommended?
Give me a minute, please, because the assistant just let me in, so I need to get my document out.
No worries. Councilmember Bagby.
You know, I just found it. Can you come back to me?
Absolutely. Councilmember Paula.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm fine with the three Committees that I'm on there. Thank you.
I do want to note that in terms of the point, the recommendations, the way they landed, each, each one of you as a Councilmember would serve as Chair if your name's listed first. That was, that was a suggestion that you'd be a Chair of the Subcommittee. And just real quickly, so for Finance, Admin, and Police, the recommendation was Mayor Lance to chair the Finance, Admin, and Police with Councilmember Paula. For the Planning and Sustainability Subcommittee, it would be chaired by Councilmember Bagby with Councilmember Cruz. For the Public Works and Facilities Subcommittee, it would be chaired by Councilmember Walter with the fellow Subcommittee Member, Councilmember Paula. For the Joint City Cloverdale Fire District, it would be chaired by Councilmember Cruz and joined by Councilmember Bagby. And for the Joint City School District Subcommittee, it would be chaired by Councilmember Paula and joined by Mayor Lance.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, you want to comment yet?
I'm perfectly fine. As you'll note, I only have one Committee, which is Public Works, so I'm more than willing to jump in. If a Councilmember would like to give up a seat on another Committee, I'll jump in there and be more than happy to serve on that Subcommittee as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready.
Councilmember Cruz, please go ahead.
Well, I, I will not be in the, let's see, in the Health Action. So I need someone to be in the Health Action.
We're focusing on the Subcommittee first, if you don't mind, because we don't have all the pages.
Oh, okay, yeah, no.
Apologize for that if I wasn't clear. I'm sorry.
Could I have, could I have somebody else be in the Cloverdale Senior Center?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, Councilmember Cruz, you, you currently for our Subcommittees, you're set up for Planning and Sustainability, and for the Joint City and Fire District. Are you okay with those?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Bagby, are you ready now?
Yep, I'm fine with those, Mr. Mayor.
Perfect. The only thing I want to ask is, Councilmember Paula, would you be willing to chair the Finance and Admin since you were on it last year? I think it's only, only right for you to be the Chair of that, since you have more knowledge of it? If not, no big deal. I'll.
Yeah, no, I'm perfectly happy to do that, but I was going to ask Councilmember Walter if he would like one of the two Subcommittees that I have, so you would have two.
Sure.
Which one would you like to sit on?
You tell me.
Well, I like all three of them, so you pick whatever one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
How about if I take the, how about if I take, well, you do such a good job on the school, I hate to jump in there.
You want to take the Finance, then?
I'll take the Finance.
Okay.
Okay.
So with that, since we're both new, do you want the Chair, or do you want the second spot?
I serve at your pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
You've probably done it 15 times.
I'll be the Chair.
So you'll be the Chair. I appreciate that. David, with that being the only two small changes, are we good?
So noting that the change in recommendation for the Finance, Admin, and Police would be Walter Chair with Mayor Lance.
Correct. And times and meeting dates at this point, are they all okay? We'll do that next, on this part. For the City School, I think, Joe, I'd like to say that it's been okay so far.
It has been. You know, we certainly can meet a little earlier if it works with the school staff. That's, I know, they work around the school schedule, and I know that that is a little late. We might want to check. I'd be willing to move it to 4:00 if that would work with them. The school gets out at 3:00, doesn't it?
The reason we had done that in the past was because of public comments wanting to start later with parents.
Okay.
So maybe we split it and go 4:30?
That's fine, yeah.
I'm sure the school will be okay with that, because that's after their, their work hours.
Great. Okay, so 4:30.
That will still accommodate for, for public to committing parents.
And Councilmember Walter, does 2:00 still work good for you, or would 1:00 work, 1:30?
I could do either one. 2:00 is fine. 1:00 is fine.
What about staff? With 1:30, that's what we do, the finance, where we're doing the finance at work.
1:30 would work fine for us.
Okay, so if that works for you, I'd like to move that to 1:30. Okay. Great, okay.
That'll make it easy, sticking Tuesdays to 1:30. Same with the Finance and Admin.
Mr. Mayor, when it's time to come to Planning and Sustainability, I would like to ask Councilmember Bagby if we could change the time, too.
Perfect ask. Go for it.
More than likely. I guess I, what's your, if I bring up my calendar, what's your pleasure, and if the staff can accommodate it as well?
Yes, so.
Just earlier on the day?
Staff interfere with your meeting on Tuesdays. I think it would be best if it's 1:00 or 2:00. David and Kevin, what do you guys have on Tuesdays?
Oh, that's right, it's the Planning Commission meeting.
It doesn't, it doesn't normally conflict, but it has when we change the Planning Commission date.
It is the third Thursday, so generally won't conflict unless there's a special meeting, but 1:30 actually works better than 4:00, because 4:00 does conflict with setup for Planning Commission.
Oh, let's do that. Does that work for you? 1:30?
Works fine for staff.
Councilmember Cruz, does that time work for you?
Yes.
Perfect. Anything else on the Subcommittees? I love it. Very painless. Moving on to Board Appointments for Regional. Here we go.
And Mayor, your pleasure, I can just walk, walk through, if you want to just walk through the list.
Go ahead.
Which is page four of the attachment. So starting with the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce, we've identified Mayor Lance and Councilmember Walter. Okay. Moving on, Cloverdale Senior Center, noting the change, Councilmember Cruz, since you'd prefer not to, not to sit as the liaison. So currently, we have Mayor Lance, you as the alternate, and is there, it looks like we've got Councilmember Walter?
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay, moving forward, Planning Commission liaison, currently Councilmember Walter serves and is recommended to continue to serve. The alternates vacant.
Would Councilmember Bagby or Councilmember Cruz be interested in that, since they're both on the Planning Commission?
I'm fine.
Okay, perfect. No alternates?
Okay, continuing on Cloverdale Rancharia, we've identified Councilmember Cruz and Councilmember Walter as the alternate.
Hear nothing.
For the Cloverdale Regional Library, the Library Advisory Board, I'm noting an error there. I continue to have a former, former Mayor Turner. I think it would suggest Mayor, Mayor Lance, and Councilmember Cruz as an alternate. Okay, moving on, the Homeless Community Advisory Group, and this, this was not, my error was not included on the original preference worksheet. Mayor Lance has led up that process over the last, over 2021, and I've identified Councilmember Paula as the second member of that Committee.
That's fine.
Okay, moving forward, the League of California Cities Board of Directors, this is a appointment by the League. It's identified as Councilmember Bagby. And then likewise, the Redwood Empire Division Legislative Committee is identified as Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Cruz. Moving on, Northern Sonoma County Air Pollution Control District, recommendation is for Councilmember Paula to serve as the main appointment, and Councilmember Cruz as the alternate. Moving on, it's the Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund, and really now it's CIRA, it's a joint, it's Joint, REMIF and CIRA. Having our staff serve in this capacity, Susie Holmes is your Finance Director, and your City Manager is your alternate. Okay, continuing on, the Russian River Watershed Association, Councilmember Cruz is lead appointment with Councilmember Bagby as the alternate. Continuing on the Sonoma County Department of Health Services Health Action Council, this again was, I think, Councilmember Cruz indicated her preference not to serve on Health Action. Councilmember Bagby is identified as the alternate.
Yeah, and I can't, I can't take that, David. It's, I've been the alternate, but it conflicts with something else that I have.
If Council prefers.
Do we know the date? Where do they meet? I mean, what, how often and what times?
They tend to meet infrequently, and when they do meet, it's usually once a month. Don't have a, a, a meeting schedule for.
They don't have a standing date, that, so I wouldn't know if it would conflict.
There is a reorganization, and I sent an email with that, and they're going to meet in February, and they will be determining their new meeting times and so on. But normally, it's been once a month on a Friday morning.
Are they Zoom meetings, or are they in person?
Well, for the last two years, it's been online.
Okay.
Either of you interested?
Yeah, it's been Fridays, and so I, I haven't, it's usually Friday morning, and I, I've never been able to cover it. I wouldn't have been able to cover it if Marta had ever missed it.
There for three years.
Yeah, but it, I mean, it depends on how they reorganize, but I probably, like, they can't take it on.
I, I see a hand raised by Vice, Vice Mayor Walter.
Councilmember Bagby, are you still wanting to be the alternate on that? Are you okay with that?
I couldn't, I couldn't hear, sorry, which one are we on?
It is for the Sonoma County Department of Health Services Health Action Council.
No, I can't do it.
Okay. I'll be the alternate. Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. And thank you, Vice Mayor, for stepping up.
Okay, moving, moving forward, the Sonoma County.
This is the primary, Walter?
We, want to proceed, Mayor?
Please.
Okay.
Sorry.
Next appointment is the Sonoma County Mayor's Council Members Association Legislative Committee. The recommended appointments are Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Walter as the alternate.
Okay.
Proceeding.
I was just going to say, I know Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Walter, you have quite a few. I've done that many, many years. I don't mind being the alternate and filling in, should Councilmember Bagby not be able to attend, so if you.
I'm fine with it, Joe.
Okay, good.
So I'll make a change to Councilmember Bagby with Councilmember Paula as the alternate?
Oh, no, I think you, you were going to keep it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's going to keep it, yeah. So that's fine.
The Sonoma County Open Space District Advisory Board, that's an appointment that's done through the, the Sonoma County Mayors and Council Members Association. No recommended appointments at this time, but that would be something that would come before Council, should there be, should there be an opening. The, the next Committee or Regional Board is the Sonoma County Transportation Authority and Regional Climate Protection Authority, otherwise SCTA, RCPA. The recommendation is for Councilmember Bagby to serve as a Board Member with Councilmember Cruz as an alternate.
Okay.
Okay. Next Regional Board is the Zero Waste, formerly Sonoma County Waste Management Agency. Councilmember Cruz was the Chair for 2021, and I recommend she, she continue serving as a Board Member with Councilmember Paula as an alternate. Okay. Next is the Sonoma Marin Area Rail Transfer, SMART, and the recommendation is for Councilmember Bagby to serve in that, in that role. It is a role that also requires appointment by the Mayor's, or requires a membership on the SCTA and RCPA Board, which Council's already supported. And then last but not least, is Sonoma Clean Power. Recommendation is that Councilmember Bagby with Councilmember Cruz serving as the alternate.
Perfect.
And I just want to note for the record, we, there will be another appointment. This will be to the, for, for the, serve as the Northern Sonoma County Representative for Homelessness. There's a discussion that will need to occur amongst the three cities that comprise Northern Sonoma County, Windsor, Healsburg, as well as Cloverdale. It doesn't have to be a Councilmember. That discussion will come back for Council's consideration. Just want to make a note.
Thank you, David.
So I think, I think we heard from Council's, Council's recommendations made some changes to the recommendations. No, I think unless Council has any further direction, what we will do is bring back a resolution for Council's adoption, which will set the meeting dates and times and Committee Assign, Committee Appointments. In addition, your City Clerk will also notify, well, once we adopt the resolution, or assuming Council adopts the resolution, would notify the respective Regional Boards of the Council's final appointments.
Thank you, David. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. David, I just want to make sure that we captured Public Works Subcommittee. The time is now 1:30, and the meeting is going to be monthly.
Correct. I noted that the meeting time was changed to 1:30. I think in the schedule and the, in the packet, I did identify it was going to be monthly.
You did.
But I didn't have that on the worksheet, but, so that, that will be, we'll, we'll make sure we get it as monthly.
Okay, and you're, okay with that?
Yes, yes.
There's just a lot of work to do on that Committee, and.
There is.
Thank you.
Good job, David. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council, for, for your prioritization. I think it worked out, worked out well for the point.
All right. We'll move on to G2, American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, the Spending Plan Discussion.
Okay, I'll, I'll start and certainly let our Finance Director jump in. What we're asking Council to do tonight is adopt the resolution that would amend your fiscal year '21, '22 budget to incorporate the, the, the first tranche of the American Rescue Plan Funds that have been allocated to the, the City of Cloverdale. We've, we've noted in the packet that we expect an allocation of the ARPA funds, which were allocated to cities under, under what was called the Corona Virus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Program. We have received of the estimated $2,070,070, that we've received, you know, exactly half of that, or $1,035,000. What we're asking Council again to do is to go ahead and amend the budget and incorporate that into a newly established fund that would be part of your budget. And as, as part of this budget adjustment, we, we are also requesting Council to review the previous direction you provided to Council on how you would like to, to allocate those funds. Ultimately, by bringing them into the budget, we would then allocate them to various funds at your direction based on your spending priorities. What we've included in the packet is, is a funding matrix that would be attached to the budget resolution upon your adoption that would identify how you'd like those, the, the ARPA funds allocated. We did, we did note that while the budget adjustment is really only for this current fiscal year budget, we did allocate, we did show a funding matrix that identifies the use in entirety of, of, of the $2 million. What staff did was, when we originally reviewed the, the funding matrix with Council in October, is take your, your input, and of course, there were some changes, particularly around some of the public, proposed public health expenditures, is amend the matrix to reflect Council's direction. Some of the things we heard was, you know, remove some of the proposed reimbursement of, of general fund expenses and really direct those towards, towards critical infrastructure improvements, particularly in, in, in your water fund. And also, as part of that, park infrastructure specifically targeting irrigation and additional work that can be done to reduce water usage in our parks. But also, since the Agenda Packet was, or since the Council's original discussion, we did receive a, a letter from the Cloverdale Multipurpose, the Senior Multipurpose Center, requesting an allocation of some additional funds. Council had previously supported through the budget an allocation of $15,000 to the Senior Center. In late December, we received a letter requesting an increase in, in city funding towards the Senior Center of $25,000. towards the senior center of 25,000 and staff thought it was appropriate based on the letter for council to consider whether you'd like to use or allocate some, uh, ARPA funds to the senior center. Again, their, their letter reflects that part of their funding, um, request is based on the services that they've provided as part of the COVID-19 pandemic, particularly related to addressing food insecurity as well as, uh, hosting, um, testing sites and vaccination sites, uh, that have been tremendously beneficial to our community. And so, uh, one option for council is whether it's part of the discussion on ARPA funds, you'd like to allocate some additional funding, uh, to, to the senior center. We can certainly note if council, uh, supports increasing the funding, you know, that you, you do it with ARPA or use ARPA to, to support that, the, the existing allocation of general fund, which is in the budget, uh, in the amount of $15,000. It's really, uh, you could fund the entirety of the 25,000 with ARPA, uh, or, or fund the difference between what's in the budget now, the 15 and the 10 using ARPA. Uh, secondarily.
I'm sorry to jump in, um, David, just on that, just, just before anybody jumps in on the, the, in, on the senior center, we do have a recusal. Um, I know you'll probably cover that request in more detail when Councilmember Bagby recuses herself and, and just upfront, just to recommend doing the, uh, presentation as David's doing and then doing the recusal items first and then continuing with everything else. I'm so sorry to interrupt, David, just didn't want the, a discussion to start.
Thank you, Jose. That was our plan. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, Jose. Um, and, and then, uh, as was mentioned during public comment earlier, we did receive a letter of requesting funding from or by La Familia Sana in the amount of, uh, $75,000. And again, uh, it does appear that the basis for the funding request can, is, could be supported with, uh, ARPA funds, uh, based on, uh, the services that they're proposing to be provided. That particular request was received, uh, you know, after the agenda packet was, was published, but we've included it here, uh, their letter and their funding request is attached to this agenda item so that you can consider that, you know, as part of this discussion. Of course, council could, uh, if you so direct, um, have us, you know, review that, uh, request, uh, you know, using other, other city funding like general fund, uh, but we did want to bring it forward as part of this conversation because they specifically are requesting an allocation of, of ARPA funds in their, in their funding request. Uh, again, I did want to note, uh, that the, the funding identified in the funding matrix of $250,000 under sewer was for, uh, drainage improvements on Times Square and that was a specific issue that our specific funding requests, uh, which, uh, Councilmember Cruz had identified she has a conflict of interest given her, the proximity to, uh, to the property. With that said, that, that provides an overview and I do want to, uh, consume all the air here. I know our, our finance director would like to offer a few comments on, on, uh, on this, uh, review, this discussion tonight on this budget amendment.
Yeah, thank you, David. Um, I just wanted to point out that if we do give ARPA funds to any nonprofits, that then we have additional reporting that we are required to do and so we are then responsible to make sure that they spend it correctly and then to audit the funds for, I think, five years. So I just want to keep that in mind. It, my preference would be if you choose to do that, to do it in a different way where you, um, in the, when we first brought this, we had where you could reimburse the general fund for some staffing, um, to get it up to pre-pandemic, um, measure. And if we could instead get those funds, you can always do whatever you want with the general fund if you want to give more money to any, um, of the nonprofits, but that way we're not being responsible by using ARPA funds for a nonprofit. Just my personal opinion, um, I think it's cleaner, um, it keeps us, um, it just makes it a lot easier for staff, but again, we'll do whatever you want. Just wanted to point that out, that there will be additional reporting requirements if we do give money to nonprofits.
Makes sense. Thank you, Suzy.
May I comment, Mr. Mayor?
Let's, let's, if you don't mind, uh, Councilmember Cruz, I'd like to start with the senior center and that way we can have Melanie recuse and move forward with that and get it done so she can come back. Is that okay? Councilmember Bagby, do you, are you going to, uh, we'll just text you or something to make sure you're there for us. Perfect.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, please go ahead.
Suzy, um, you, Suzy, you had mentioned that we have to audit for five years. Did I hear you say that right?
I, I'm sorry, I don't know if, if it's total five years or if it's up to five years, but we would have, we would be responsible for auditing that, um, nonprofit for up to five years.
Okay, so if we give money to a nonprofit, we're responsible.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question on the floor.
We're responsible to audit for a five-year period. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cruz, you're up.
Yes. Well, you know, these funds are strict in terms of COVID-related affairs and, uh, the, this particular nonprofit, La Familia Sana, is, is strictly requesting this for mental health and they have to audit themselves and they have to keep quite a strict record of this. And I don't know if Ann is still in the meeting, but, um, she's the chair of that, um, organization and she could probably answer that. But I think even though it's a little bit more work, it would be worth keeping it within the standard of the ARPA, um, distribution of funds.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz.
So I just had a question because we're gonna be talking about the senior center first. So you mentioned how much was in the general fund that has been awarded and this would be in addition to that? Is that what I heard you say or?
Yeah, relative to the senior, senior, uh, council did allocate $15,000 in the, in the adopted budget, uh, to, uh, support and fund the senior center. So it, it's, there's an option for council. Well, and then they submitted their letter asking for, for 25,000.
I see.
So, uh, staff's view was it, was it 25 on top of the 15? It was 25 total. So I think for, for council's consideration would be, would you like to, uh, fund the entirety of their funding requests with ARPA funds, the 25, or just fund the difference between what's funded in the general fund and, um, their, their, their total funding request? So there's kind of three options there for you. Don't fund it all, uh, uh, fund the full 25 that they're asking for with ARPA, or just fund the difference between what's, what's, what's funded in the budget at 15 and 25.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and David, if I may, don't we need to determine if it's gonna be general fund or not because, uh, the senior center is also a nonprofit?
That's exactly what we're talking about.
Well, they were talking about amount.
And where it comes from.
Correct. Mayor and Councilmember Cruz, that currently we, in the budget, we've identified a funding allocation of, of $15,000 with that source being the general fund. So again, it's a question of for council whether you'd like to, one, whether you want to, uh, support the senior center and their total funding requests and if so, do you, you want to fund the full 25 with ARPA, uh, funds or, or just the difference between the amount that's currently allocated in the budget using general fund and their, and their total? So it's, uh, if, if you wanted to use ARPA funds, it's really, question is, do you want to fund them at the $25,000 level or the, or an additional 10,000 so that they're, so you meet their funding request?
Thank you. Um, if we could just back up for one second, uh, Suzy, um, one more time, um, with respect to us being responsible for auditing, what are the consequences if the money's not used, um, appropriately or if we slip? Are we liable to pay that back? I mean, what's the consequences for us not doing a proper audit?
Sure, good, great question. We are liable. It, it's, it's the city's money and it's our responsibility to ensure that it is used, um, according to the ARPA rules and regulations.
Okay. So, uh, if, but if we gave it through the general fund, there's no audit?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And my next question would be to either Suzy or David, is there enough things through our city to spend the ARPA money on and take it out of the general fund for places like the senior center or La Familia, any nonprofit that we choose? Does that make sense?
Um, are you asking, are there additional?
I'm asking if we, if we decided to do, say, I'm just gonna do the whole thing for use of senior centers since that's what we're talking about, 25,000 out of general fund. Is there something that we could spend the ARPA money on?
Yes.
That we would normally be spending general fund money on?
Absolutely.
So it wouldn't, it's, it's a wash, basically?
Exactly.
With less work for city staff, less auditing over five years?
Yes.
And did, did we open this up to nonprofits? I mean, I, I mean, are we soliciting other requests from other nonprofits? I'm thinking of the History Center? I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the Chamber, the Chamber and the work that they did during COVID. Did they request funding?
They, they did not, um, but, but, but staff in the, including your packet, the original funding matrix, we, we did identify, um, the, the Chamber agreement and the senior center agreement, uh, using, uh, to, to, to address those, uh, allocations in the budget with ARPA funds. And I think what we heard from council was a preference to, uh, direct ARPA towards, to, to direct ARPA funds towards infrastructure and not, uh, address general fund impacts. Um, but again, uh, you know, just for council's, um, consideration, uh, you know, many cities were, as, as kind of your finance director indicated, were looking at ways to offset general fund expenses because you can, you can use ARPA funds to do that and then it frees up your general fund with a little more flexibility without the, the strings attached, of course. So, uh, I'm always mindful of the, of the general fund because we, we, we do have a, uh, operational deficit in the, in the budget and, you know, could, you know, additional expenditure will, will increase that deficit. Um, so we were, you know, giving council options for how you might, might offset some of those, some of those general fund expenses. But again, that's a policy direction for council.
So it sounds like you and Suzy are butting heads on this a little bit.
No, we, we both, we're, I think we're in alignment. It, it's really, it's a policy direction for council.
Which one is easier? If, I mean, because it's, it's, it's a wash to us if we chose to do a dollar to anyone. I mean, so which one is easier for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
One, one, one second, Councilmember Cruz?
Well, I, I think the, the, the key difference that, uh, Suzy's bringing forward is that the ARPA funds do come with an auditing requirement, um, because anytime we receive $750,000 or more from the federal government, it triggers a single audit. So that, uh, means, I mean, regardless, we're gonna be subject to those auditing requirements. We're not, we're not exempt. So we're gonna be subject to that. It just means that, uh, now that we've, if we use ARPA funds for nonprofits, that it extends some of those auditing requirements to those entities to ensure that they are spending them appropriately and in accordance with the, the uses of, that are permitted within, within the, um, adopted rules and regulations. So, uh, I, you know, I, I don't, I wouldn't see it as necessarily, uh, something that should inhibit your decision, uh, you know, make a prudent financial decision, you know, based on, you know, count, your, your perspective first and foremost.
Thank you. Councilmember Cruz, please go ahead.
You know, I, I don't have a problem with this, uh, tale that comes with the, with the ARPA money because the senior center has done and is doing what ARPA requires and they are very familiar with the requirements. I don't believe, I mean, I trust everybody at the senior center and I believe that there's gonna be absolutely no problem. Uh, I think we need to keep our general funds available for other incidents that do take place and for ongoing needs that the city has. This money is specified for this particular use related to COVID and the same thing with La Familia Sana. They are doing what is required in order to provide a service that no other entity is providing to the community of Cloverdale. I don't have any doubt that they will comply with the rules and regulations that have been established and they're very clearly defined. Uh, so I, I would advise and I would go for using ARPA funds for La Familia Sana and for the Cloverdale Senior Center. And this is not about opening it up to any kind of nonprofit. This is about supporting those nonprofits that have been 150% out there in the community providing services to all of Cloverdale, uh, citizens with food security, with mental health and with all the other additional support that COVID, uh, people have had to endure during these two years of, uh, restrictions. I mean, the county never really came through as written in paper when it came to assisting people with food, assisting people with healthcare, assisting people with transportation and providing the necessary medications. It took for La Familia Sana and Cloverdale Senior Center to do that for the citizens of Cloverdale. So, uh, I mean, I, I would say they have earned these monies from ARPA, they have done the job, they are doing the job and I know they're gonna continue doing the job. So, um, I don't think that there is any other nonprofit in town that has done what they've done. Um, so, you know, one of the big requirements for this funding is that it's COVID-related and that it is a consequence of the COVID situation and this has been proven over and over. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. I'm gonna have to ask you when we bring Councilmember Bagby back, that you, uh, reiterate your comments for La Familia Sana since they're having to separate these two items? Just to make sure that your voice is heard on that one. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I, I do not have a problem, um, with the extra money, um, being given to the, um, uh, senior center. Um, I know the work that they've done there. Um, I, I watch them pass their food out and their, and their meals every Friday afternoon. So I don't have a problem, uh, with, uh, giving them the extra money that was requested. Uh, I just don't know how we do it, whether we do it through the general fund or if we want to keep track of it. It's, um, you know, I think, I'm, this council member will leave that up to Suzy and David, um, for them.
Councilmember Paula?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I support funding both of these in full. I think, uh, they've done a tremendous service for our community. Uh, they're there for the people, the, the services they provide are invaluable and it is related to the COVID. Um, how we do that, I'm open. Uh, I don't want to create extra work. I have no problem if you come back with a schematic that shows the money replacing monies that spent on general services for the city and the general fund funds these two programs, whatever works. But I think the message from me would be come back with the plan to make the funding happen. So, thank you.
Now, Councilmember Paula, you were talking about, uh, the senior center or you were talking?
Both.
Both programs?
Both.
Okay, because I'm trying to separate them for now.
So with the senior center, we already have 15,000 in general fund dollars, correct?
That is correct.
Have we allocated on our budget? So this is for another 10,000, whether it's ARPA or general. I, I would personally prefer to keep it since we already have 15 coming out of general, that we did it all out of general and then replace the money in the general with ARPA funds.
That's great.
By, by purchasing, other purchases. That's, that's my opinion.
Sure.
Uh, Councilmember Cruz, regarding senior center and the, how the funding is done, do you have a preference? a preference?
Again, I prefer ARPA. I think the city needs a general fund available.
Okay. Jose, do you have any comments on anything we were talking about?
Mr. Mayor, can I make a, just, just making a quick comment? I think maybe this will provide some, just from what I'm hearing from Susie and David, maybe provide some comment for, some clarity for Councilmember Cruz. The, the ARPA funds, it's the, we're talking about, and Susie was talking about, using the ARPA funds as intended. And as intended, they can pay, there's, there's, and Susie could probably cover this better than I can, but there is loss of revenue, for example, or other, or other services that are provided by the general fund already that can't be, that can't be replaced or that can't be paid for, saving money in your general fund. And then the question is, what do you do with that additional money and whether you can use that additional money for these nonprofits like the senior center that's asking for the money? But at, but at every single step of the way, it's using the ARPA monies as they're being, as they're, as, as required, as the requirements, following all requirements for the ARPA money. It's just a matter of what bucket do you pay? And if you pay for other things in the general fund as allowed for, then you have that additional money to either keep in your general fund or to fund these requests from nonprofits. The only difference is funding certain things in general fund, which again, allowed for some money, you don't have that, that additional reporting requirement, from what I hear from Susie, giving it straight from ARPA to your nonprofits. There, there's an auditing requirement to it that, it's not that they can't meet, it's just another hurdle that needs to be done later down the road. I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm just trying to, to make that distinction of at all times using ARPA monies as, 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 as allowed for under the law.
Right. In, in the packet, there is the final rule that was issued by Treasury and it provides an overview of the program. Just for the listening public, recipients, which is the city of, of funds, can, can be used to, you know, replace lost public sector revenue. The second supportable use is for COVID-19 public health and economic responses and it says recipients can use the fund for program services or capital expenditures that respond to the public health and negative impacts. It can also be used to fund nonprofits that provide service, you know, government service or services to the, the community, including small businesses, nonprofit impacted industries in the public sector. So it's, it's a very legitimate use to fund the senior center or, or other nonprofits that are providing these, these critical, critical services.
Thank you.
This is a question again, I think it's general fund or ARPA? And that's again, a policy, policy call for council.
The finances is up to you. I just want to make sure that it is understood that whatever monies are used do not curtail our use of, that there's no loss of ARPA funding, period.
Absolutely, Councilmember Cruz, absolutely. Councilmember Paula, anything?
No, I, I, I support moving forward with this. I'd like to see the staff come up with the mechanism to make the funding happen, whatever works smoothest.
Vice Mayor? Okay. So with that solved, is that good for you on that part?
Yeah, I think so. It, it ultimately, if it requires a general fund expenditure, just noting that will require another budget amendment because what's in, what's in your packet tonight is not a general fund of, a budget.
And then on the ARPA, it'll show reimbursement to the general fund for lost staff over.
Yeah, we would have to, ultimately, we'd have to, let's see, go back to the funding matrix attachment to.
Attachment to.
If, for instance, we did identify closing the gap between what's currently funded 15 and 25, so we provided, say, 10,000 towards ARPA, or you, you always 10,000 of ARPA funds to the senior center, we would have to reduce the amount that are identified, increase it to the senior center for 10 and reduce one of the other proposed expenditures that's identified on, on the worksheet. I think, I think that's what you were kind of asking about earlier, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Now that we're clear, we can bring Melanie back.
So before we bring her back, Mayor, if I may, can we have an official, just an official vote? Can you open it up to the public since we're kind of segmenting the sections in case folks have a public comment regarding the specific area?
Absolutely, Jose, thank you. Sure. So we will open up to public comment for the senior center section of the ARPA funds. Al, are you there?
Yes, I am, yes, I am.
We can hear you.
Thank you, councilmembers and Mr. Mayor. I'm completely appreciative of all your comments and your deliberation on this. I realize that we did increase a, a request for 35,000. I also wanted to mention that, you know, our intent and knowing that, having worked for the local government in Santa Rosa, knowing that you do have limits before, there is additional work that's involved in tracking and, and reporting and auditing the funds. We at the senior center are trying to keep our requests low, even though we did ask to increase from 15 to, well, ultimately, with the 15 and the additional 25, we considered that to be low, relatively speaking, for the, for the services that we're providing the community. And as, as the previous fiscal sponsors of La Familia Sana, we, we did, we did, I do want to let you know that we did dissolve finally our fiscal sponsorship of La Familia Sana. And so we're trying to regroup and put together our programs again with this funding. As far as where the funding comes from, again, I think that, you know, in general fund, if you use general fund, and I could be wrong, but I think that your general fund is, is semi-replaceable on a, on a budgetary annual basis. And it, it does remove the additional work, which is a little more extensive than you might think for programs that the senior center already has in place for the city of Cloverdale and has had in place for quite some time. My goal as the president of the board of directors of, of the senior center is to eventually make the senior center completely self-sustainable. So that's why we keep our minimum, our request to a minimum and we just appreciate your, your deliberation on this. I would, I would welcome your choice to general fund as we only have two employees at the senior center and everyone else is voluntary. I wouldn't want the additional work, I wouldn't want you guys to have the additional work, but I will respect whatever you choose and thank you for allowing.
Al, if you don't mind, I have a question for you and I need clarification because it sounded different. Are you, are you requesting an additional 25,000 on top of the 15 budgeted?
We are hoping for, we are hoping for that, but as David stated very accurately, we are, we realize that the city has a lot of people asking for money.
Thank you.
And so with the initial 15,000, we would, at the minimum, like to have an additional 10,000 to round that up to 25. But yes, we did ask for 25 on top of what is already approved, leaving that discretion up to you because certainly whatever we could get, we will certainly put together.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. That kind of changed what I had heard earlier. I just want to know that everyone is on board still or that we're all on the same page here? Sounds like there was another 15,000 requested.
So we're talking in addition, a, a, in addition to 25,000 on top?
Forty total.
Forty, yeah.
So we do have Leanne Fabian.
Okay. Hi, Leanne, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Yeah, I totally support the senior center. Give them whatever they ask for. I feel that their numbers, that their requests are very conservative considering their history of what they've done to this community, like climate change again. La Familia Sana, I'm not saying that's not a good organization, but they don't have any, any track record. There's no numbers to audit right now. They, I don't even think they've filed a tax return for this year yet, which is fine. They don't need to, but put the focus on where the, the results have shown. And the senior center is awesome. I love the, the staff there, the volunteers, everything they've done. I'm not saying I don't like La Familia Sana, but the proof is in the pudding.
Thank you, Leanne, I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm more than happy to support the amount requested, the additional 25,000 for the senior center. I mean, I know what they do there. You know, Melanie's been there quite a while. I know the programs that they offer. I know the hard work that they did during COVID and I truly think they deserve that. I say that and I, I like to keep in mind, this is one-time money for the city. It can really be used for infrastructure. It can be used for a lot of good causes. This is also a good cause. So I, I really think we need to step up to the plate, show our appreciation and, and give them that extra 25,000.
Councilmember Paula?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I agree with Councilmember Walter. And I know they're going to be there again if, you know, when we have any kind of incident where we need their assistance, they're there. They're right there supporting us and most of it's done through volunteer labor. And I, I think we should, you know, help them help us. And to do that, they need to have funding to be able to get the materials and the supplies and, and be available to do what they need to do for the seniors in this community and, and the community as a whole. So I definitely support that.
Councilmember Cruz?
Well, you already heard what I said.
So now?
Totally agree. I, you know, I'm a big advocate for the senior center. And I know that we're not discussing La Familia Sana right now, but I advise Leanne to get informed.
Susie?
Yeah, I just wanted to verify that the 25,000 would be all in this fiscal year or would you want it split up like the tranches? Would you, like, we're getting one, we just received one, we'll get another one in July. Would you like that split up as well or do you want to do it all at one time this fiscal year? I just want to verify that I have the budget correct.
You have the budget? I'm, I'm looking at it as we speak, so. So you have 15 scheduled for 21, 22. And you have half now, half or part coming in July, you said, correct, of 22?
We received 1 million in July and then we'll receive another million, 35,000 in July, which will be the next fiscal year. That's the only reason I'm asking is should we, should we break it up by the tranches that we receive or just do it all now?
I'll ask what you guys want first because I have a, I'm hanging on this.
Oh, I, you know, I, I think it could go either way. You know, I think it's entirely up to you and David to decide that and, and what else we want to accomplish in, in, with this first go around. But no, if, however you guys want to do it.
I, I believe, just for reference, that the, the funding request is generally done on a fiscal year basis, so I, I really do believe that their, their, their financial need is in this current year.
Yeah.
And I, I would, I would agree and think that it needed to be done this year personally because if another $25,000 is going to break the 1.5 million dollar bank on this, I think we're having other issues. So that's what I would say is it's all now. Are we good? Any other hands? I see one more hand. Is Al still up? I can barely see it on the corner of the TV here. Let's just see if it's an old hand or... Al, are you still there?
Hello, no, it's a, it's a new hand, sorry.
No, go ahead. You're, you're, you're an important person with this decision, so I'll give you your time, please.
Well, thank you, thank you. I, I don't have much else to say on the senior center. I think you guys are doing a good job of deliberating that, but I did want to comment to a previous note. And whereas I appreciate the support of the senior center and we work really hard, I did want to make sure that people know that for the last year, we've been fiscal sponsors of La Familia Sana. They have had boots on the ground in the community of the senior center for the last year and serving the Latinx community.
Al, can I ask you a question? Will you save that comment for when we bring Councilmember Bagby back so that she can hear it as well?
Sure, absolutely.
I'll, I'll call on you again when we do public with her involved on that one, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, sir. No other hands? Anyone in our public comment here? Okay. I saw, did I see a hand? Oh, just stretching. Okay, are we, are we good? David? Councilmember Bagby, I don't know if you're still around, if we can send her a message?
We'll, we'll send her a, a message. And David, were you going to have just, just more for, for what we're doing tonight? To make these changes and have the resolution adopted tonight or is this something after you work on the finances as far as where the money is going, general fund or not, bringing that back for council for potential adoption, let's say on the consent calendar or whatnot?
We can, it, it looks like, based on the discussion tonight, we'll need to bring this back to ensure that the funding matrix meets the council's direction.
And the only reason I was asking, Mayor, was because, in order to think about what that resolution is going to look like, given that we have different budget items on there and changes as far as the voting with Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Cruz. But if we're just looking for direction, I think we got direction now, just like this. We don't need an official vote since we're going to be working on the matrix and bringing that back.
Okay. Thank you. Can I send Melanie back? I'm sure she's listening. They need like a poke button so you can poke her screen. And text messages aren't going through. Either of you guys is going through? Welcome back, councilmember. Okay. David, you want to summarize where we're at maybe to help Councilmember Bagby?
Absolutely.
I'd appreciate it.
So for, for council, we, we are referencing the matrix with the proposed funding allocation for fiscal year 21, 22. The discussion was around the senior center funding, which was not included. Council decided and supports allocation of $25,000 in addition to the existing $15,000 in the, in the budget. And it'll be a staff's discussion on how to allocate that, that, that funding request amongst the general fund and ARPA. So that's kind of where we're at. And then next is the funding request from La Familia Sana in the amount of $75,000.
I'll go ahead. Vice Mayor?
Well, I, I just have some questions about, you know, I, I know very little about the organization, but if I'm understanding the email that we received from Ann, that it is for mental health services and I... And I, I'm just not sure of the organization. And how we would, how would we audit this organization? Or again, would we just pay it out of a general fund? So that, those were the questions I had of staff.
Paula?
Well, I just have a comment. Whether it's out of the general fund or not, we still need to make sure the funds are used appropriately. You know, we just wouldn't have the same auditing requirements as under the federal. But I would hope if, on all these awards, that we have some report back, how those funds were used, and make sure that they're done appropriately. Just like we used to do on all the, when we had, back in the days of redevelopment, we gave several community organizations fundings, and they'd come back and report and with where the money went, and the services they provided with it. So I think that's got to be a requirement of any awards that we put out. So the city is well, and the community is well aware of what, how that money was used, and what services were returned. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Cruz, is your hand?
I, I am surprised at these comments. Haven't you guys read the documents that were sent, recording the expenses?
Yes, I read, I read them, Councilmember Cruz.
I mean, that, it's just like, it's been around for about a year and a half. And for the last six months, it has spent thousands of dollars on mental health, not only for Latinos, but for the whole general community. And it's, it's important that we do engage and learn about what's happening in the community. And I encourage all of you to go to one of the board meetings, and to talk to Ann Elston, the president of the organization, and even the executive director, Jade Weimann, about everything that's going on. I mean, you very well know how expensive mental health is, and all of us know what the cost has been, not only in Cloverdale, but in the country, when it comes to mental health and the situations that have been faced by so very many people in the community. The number of suicides have raised, and they have worked very closely with the school district also, in mental health for youth. All of that is documented. I, I would support this particular request.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Councilmember Bagby?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree. I, you know, read with a lot of interest the email exchange between David and Jade, and also the letter of support from, from Ann Elston. It's really clear that they have a, a very accomplished and top-notch board. They're doing very important work. I, I think mental health needs now, with the pandemic going on as it is, it's just underscores how important it is that we make sure that people have the support that they need. And it's, to me, this organization, in a very short amount of time, has really developed a pretty amazing reputation. They've been very successful, they're delivering services where they're, where they're needed. And, you know, in, in lieu of, you know, a lot of county mental health services in Sonoma County, you know, in, in northern Sonoma County, I think that this organization is essential. And I'd love to see their, their requests fulfilled. I think it's totally appropriate, and an appropriate use of these emergency funds. If not, if, if it makes it administratively easier to make, to have them come out of the general fund, I think that that's fine. But I think that it's very important that we, we support them to the, their complete request at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. Councilmember Cruz, if you don't mind, I, I want to ask you a question, since you are so familiar with them. And I've, I've spoken to Jade, Jade a few times, and in her email threads, we go back and forth, she only mentions one demographic of our population. This is for all of our community, correct?
Well, this is the, you know, we cannot, I would say, we cannot, in general, any nonprofit, and I'm not part of the organization, cannot discriminate against anybody who requests services. And they have provided services for other members of the community that are not Latinos. But yes, their main goal is Latinx community, because they advocate for housing, healthcare, and education. Because it has been an underserved community, and that is why it has that, let's call it, tag by the federal government, a protected community. But it is not only for Latinos.
Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it. Do you guys want to continue, or are we open up to public?
I'd open it up.
Public.
Jill, do we have any hands? I know we have Al waiting for us, so, perfect. Al, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council, council members, again, I appreciate the opportunity. I had, there had been something mentioned on the floor about La Familia Sana, and the lack of experience, or the lack of the numbers in hitting the ground. And whereas I, I totally appreciate the same person's comments about the senior center, I wanted to make it clear that La Familia Sana joined collaboratively with the senior center a little over a year ago. They were a grassroots organization that were, that hit the ground running, and they needed a fiscal sponsor. So the senior center took them on as the fiscal sponsors. And we've been working in collaboration with La Familia Sana over a year. And that work has, yes indeed, pointed mostly towards the Latinx community, but in collaboration with the senior center, and the, and the idea that we can bridge the gap between the communities in our city, they have been the ones out there with boots on the ground, getting people COVID tested, getting people vaccinated, getting the message out, and, and emergency stuff out there, delivering meals. And again, as the fiscal sponsors, a lot of that, they did through the senior center. We have recently dissolved that, and they have their own EIN number, 501TC, or, yeah, anyway. They have their own EIN number now. They are, they just recently opened an office, a couple blocks away from the senior center. They are still finding out, working in collaboration, to help us bridge that gap and bring services to the entire community, not just to any one sector, sector of the community. So I just wanted to make sure that, that people knew that they didn't pop up yesterday. They have been doing a tremendous amount of work in collaboration with the senior center. They're branching out on their own, and I congratulate them on, on being able to do that, because they are a dynamic group.
Thank you, Al, I appreciate your comments. And Councilmember Bagby, just to clarify, he was talking about something that was brought up in public comment during the senior center. I was going to reiterate what was said, just so you were a part of it, but he did it very well, so I'll leave it alone. Any other public comment, Jill? Any hands other than?
Oh, but it's Al, and he just took it away. We're good.
Anyone in the public here? Please come forward.
Uh, Leanne just raised a hand.
Okay, we'll, we'll bring her back after. No, you're first.
Go ahead.
You're good, please.
My name is Ann Elston again. I want to make clear that although we are a Latin-focused organization, Al Meyer is absolutely correct. We work in collaboration. If 40% of our community identifies as Latin, and we have 60% who identify as Anglo, we need to bridge that gap. The reason that we are focusing right now in asking for this money on public health, mental health, is as a result of all of the traumas. COVID, the fire, the financial problems, everything else. The thing that is so critical in the Latinx community is mental health. I had no idea, as an Anglo, how terribly critical it is, until I went to one of their community meetings. And I saw tears. People saying, my child is talking about suicide. I don't know where to go. So we have a program underway. It's funded, we got a healthy amount to start the program. And that came from the Center for Disaster Philanthropy. And so now, what we're asking for is funding to keep it going. All of our available space is filled up so fast, that we just, we can't do anymore. We are working with a bilingual, bicultural group of therapists, and they are doing a terrific job. So that is the basis for our request. We'll continue to do all of our other things, our COVID, our rapid response. But for right now, the thing that is so critical is to keep the funding going, so that we can give these people someplace to turn when things get so out of control that they don't know what to do. Thank you.
Any, any more hands? I can't see any. Hi, Leanne, welcome back.
Hi. Just real quick, again, I support La Familia Sana. I didn't say I didn't, but I was dissed by Marta Cruz by telling me that I was uninformed. Well, I'm not. So, here's that. Mental health is very crucial right now. I support that. But $75,000 seems a little extreme. That was my only comment. I didn't insult you, Marta. I don't appreciate you insulting me. By the way, my oldest son is Caucasian, Asian, and Hispanic. Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne. We have one more hand. Looks like Melanie might be up on a hand. Hi, Melanie, are you there?
Hi, Todd. Hey, councilmembers. I just want to say that I'm amazed with all the discussion, so thoughtful on everybody's part. And I just want to share with you that, you know, La Familia Sana members, board members, staff, and senior center members and volunteers have been side by side, working in this community. We've, we've been side by side doing food distributions at the citrus fair since September 25th of 2020. And I think there's been, the best part of it has been the crossover. That it's not about those that are Latinx members, and then those that are not. It's been the crossover and the caring and the community that we have built up. Our collaboration with La Familia Sana started before, when we got hit with COVID so bad. And Zeke Guzman brought it to our attention, the need in the community. We, I worked with Marta Cruz, doing food distributions. She was there on a regular basis, picking up meals to home, deliver to those in need. I went personally to homes and saw living conditions and the need. And I've also seen and talked to members in the Latinx community, but of course I do with the senior center, those that we serve too. But I went and talked to them. They not only had struggles with, you know, poor living conditions, for one, food insecurity, for another. One of the Latinx members was being scammed, and lived off a very low income. I, I've seen the need in the community. And I, I, I'm so pleased and so honored to have been able to collaborate with La Familia Sana. And I've, I've been side by side with them, seeing the work that they do. And I think that, I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate your consideration for funding for both of us.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Close public comment, and bring it back to the dais. Vice Mayor?
I'm, I'm fine with it.
No, I support it.
Councilmember Bagby, any further comments? Councilmember Cruz?
I want to say that one of the reasons why vaccination is so high in Cloverdale is thank you to La Familia Sana. I remember when I started testing and vaccination in Cloverdale, and how it went on a peak once all these volunteers, and the collaboration with Alexander Valley Health, the senior center, and all of the people who have become the board of La Familia Sana. It is incredible, the amount of work that these individuals have done to get Cloverdale to be safe, and to stay safe. In every event, there has been a presence of testing and vaccination. I know that many members of the community, in general, has, have been there. And we have promoted it among all social media, because this is not a one-group problem. This is a world problem, and it is a county problem, it's a Cloverdale problem. And we have been very active at making sure that Cloverdale stays safe. The minute that anybody has COVID, Mayra Reggine goes and delivers food, wipes, masks, disinfectant, et cetera. And this is to anybody who says, I am homebound, and I have a need. And this is also the reason why we also have the collaboration with the Cloverdale New Fight School District in having testing at their site. All of this is thanks to La Familia Sana, and the joint effort with the county health system, and the senior center. I am so proud of this organization, and the new leadership that's coming about. I really want all of us to become more engaged, and to celebrate what a beautiful relationship has been established, when distributing food on Monday evenings, when delivering additional food during the week for the elders, when people have died, how they have come together. This is just something that has not been in Cloverdale for a while. And it is not just a few people, it's a whole bunch of people. So I, I take advantage of this moment to say thank you, and, and to invite everybody to call on and receive services, and to be there when there is a need. And don't hesitate to call any of us who are closely engaged with La Familia Sana. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cruz. Just real quick, I, I was very pleased to hear that it's as inclusive as it is, and that it was involved with the senior center, because I did not have that knowledge before this meeting. And it's good to hear that they aren't as new as I was picturing in my head, and that they are out there for all of Cloverdale, as everyone hears me say just about every meeting, that that is what we're here for. My only concern was the amount of money. It seems pretty high for somebody this new, and for how we support our, our nonprofits. I'll put that out there, but if, it's, looks like four, four people already are supporting the amount. So if anyone has anything to say, that's up to them. But I think that the 75 personally is a little too much to be giving, just because we don't give that much to nonprofits, and it's, it's kind of lopsided for me right now.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with 75,000. I think it's laid out in the letter on how it's going to be used, and I certainly support mental health services are critical. And I just think at this point, but I do ask that all, when the funds are distributed, that it's understood that we would like to have a report at the end of the cycle. that it's understood that we would like to have a report at the end of the cycle to the council so we can both understand just exactly what was accomplished, how it worked as well as, and that's not something new. We've done that with the chamber every year where they've done services for the city, they come back with a full detailed outline so we understand how it all works. That's really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Mayor, that it is a large amount. It's, you know, that we give to a nonprofit. But on the recommendation of Councilmember Cruz and Melanie from the Senior Center and Ann, I'm comfortable with it. We'll get into counting at the end of how things were spent and I trust with everyone that I just mentioned, it'll be fine. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Yeah, I really, you know, thank the council for having an open mind and really supporting this important, this grassroots service that is just so essential. And I absolutely agree. I hope that Jade or the president of the Board will be able to come back and give regular report outs because I think it's important for council and staff. Obviously, we want to know where the money is going, but we also want to learn and we, you know, want to find out, you know, what are the needs in our community. So I hope it's not just a, in this case, it's not just a grant, it's really a partnership with that organization. And I hope that staff can work with Jade and have her come back and give a presentation on what they've been doing as far as providing mental health services and then other areas of needs that they are seeing in hopes that, you know, we can really bridge those gaps and bring the, you know, help bring the community together. I think that, you know, the presentation that we received a couple of weeks ago that showed the disconnect between the Latinx community and, like, what I'd say, just, you know, the balance of the community, La Familia Sana is really on the ground of bridging, of making those connections and crossing those bridges and communities really coming together to provide services that we all need during this very difficult time. So I really do look forward to them coming back and I'm happy that it looks like we're going to support their request in full because unlike a lot of other charitable donations that we all probably made at the end of last year, this is a grassroots organization where, you know, the money really goes directly into providing those necessary services in our community. So I'm happy to see that we'll be supporting mental health services in Cloverdale.
That was very well said, Councilmember Bagby. Thank you. With that, since bringing the resolution back, do you have direction?
Staff has direction, just confirming the amount of 75,000 and I see support for that. And does council want to direct use of ARPA funds or is it general funds or is it staff-driven?
If I may? Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like you and the Finance Director to sit down and come back with the plan. Either or is fine from my standpoint, but if you could reimburse the general fund based on city services and which would free up money from the general fund to fund these and that makes it easier on the reporting requirements, that's perfectly fine.
Looks like I see everyone's head nodding in the affirmative to support Joe's decision here, so.
All right. Staff at this time would recommend that we address the funding for, council made a motion previously to support the 250,000 for drainage improvements at Times Square identified on the worksheet under the category of sewer improvements. I think that the direction made by a vote of council was clear, but that's an item that Councilmember Cruz would just have to recuse herself on. Jose?
That's correct. So I know Councilmember Cruz has her camera off already and Councilmember Cruz, we will be, the council will be starting to discuss the Times Square drainage item.
That's already been voted on.
So please keep yourself recused on the side.
Wasn't that already voted on?
It was, just confirming that.
Well, it's not changed, so I don't think we need to revisit that. I mean, it's...
Yeah, I think that'll come back on the resolution at this point. And what else is going to come back on that resolution?
Well, the resolution is going to come back with the revised funding matrix, if it is revised, if the other $100,000 that the council authorized or recommended staff is all general fund, that will be a separate resolution for general fund expenditure and we'll come back with this exhibit.
Yeah, the way I would visit, I would vision it that you would show a fund increase by X dollars from the ARPA funds to reimburse the city for X expenses and then a new general fund expenditure, if that's the way it goes, to this. So it should be a wash. Am I misunderstanding that? That's how I understood that we were talking about.
Well, that...
But that would be up to you guys, so I guess what I'm saying is we're open-minded how you lay out, I think the message, we just want to make sure that the funding is there. So, I mean, rather than just tell you how to do it, prefer for you to come back with a recommendation.
Got it.
Right, so we're going to take part of the original and part of the second and we're going to make those work. Okay.
And it'll have the same results with less, more efficient for city staff.
That's the goal.
Right. I just, I'm not sure, Councilmember Paul, that ARPA funds are offsetting general fund expenses because as Susie has indicated, we're spending, we'll be spending $100,000 in general fund. That's a reduction. There's no, look at it this way, the matrix is identified now uses ARPA funds. We're spending an additional $100,000, that'll be general fund. So it'll be a resolution using ARPA funds as shown, plus a resolution with a budget amendment of $100,000 in general fund.
So is it on top, so we overspent the ARPA funds? Is that what you're saying, David?
No, no, no. What's shown in the matrix right now is the expenditure of ARPA funds as identified on the matrix. We didn't include the $100,000 that council approved, additional spending tonight. If that's general fund, that's additional $100,000 from the general fund, so we'll have to do a general fund budget adjustment.
But you'll take something that we pay for at a general fund that could be supported by ARPA funds and reimburse the general fund with?
Yeah, we'd have to...
Or purchase it through it.
Reduce, if council's directing us to reduce some other general fund expenditure, which I haven't heard council say that tonight, to reduce the general fund expenditure, we could do that at mid-year, of course.
Through the chair. What I would vision is this proposed metrics would be modified. This is not the adopted one, this is the one that's proposed. It's going to be modified to include a change, which would reduce some numbers and they would be offset going to some other fund. The other fund would either be to the two organizations, if you choose to use ARPA funds, or to the city to reimburse for services provided, that's allowed under the law. So there'd be a $100,000 deduction from one of these funds with a $100,000 going to the city general fund in reimbursement for an authorized, that's allowed by law. That's how I view it. So that's what I'm saying. The number, the bottom line won't change, it's just how it all pencils.
Yeah, for instance, the office staff that we had on the original 1013 2021 rescue plan would come back on to this one and then we would reimburse the general fund that much for office staff and then...
Okay, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, staff can add additional general fund expenditures on here to offset.
Exactly.
Then it's a net.
That's what we're trying to get to.
Exactly. Perfect.
So that'll come back next meeting?
Right. For council's adoption, so now it's clear that you want us to add general fund expenses using, reimburse, use ARPA funds to reimburse other general fund expenses that aren't currently shown on here and to use those general fund savings to fund...
Yes, sir. The $100,000. Perfect, thank you. Thank you. Moving on to H, Subcommittee Items. There are any?
Mayor, no Subcommittee Items.
Then we'll go to Subcommittee Reports. Finance, Admin, and Police.
I guess that's me now, right?
Well, we can still do it off of the last one if there was a meeting, I don't know if there was.
Yeah.
It was canceled.
It's canceled? Perfect.
Yeah, Martin was the chair.
So then, guess if you want to just report out on that one?
Oh, sure. Planning and Sustainability, next meeting is February the 15th. Public Works, next meeting is January the 25th and the time will be 1:30 instead of 2:00.
City and Fire. Who is City and Fire?
Is Marta back on? Did she join us?
I came back.
Oh, okay.
Who is the chair for the City and Fire District?
It's me.
Okay. When you want to report out for your Subcommittee on that one?
Nothing to report.
Valentine's Day.
Next meeting is Valentine's Day. Okay, Joint City School Subcommittee, the next meeting was scheduled for the 17th, I believe that is falling on a school holiday.
That's correct, Mayor.
And is going to be canceled and rescheduled.
We hadn't identified a specific date for that next special meeting.
Thank you. And the Homeless Community Advisory Group, the last meeting had to be canceled due to the Planning Commission meeting yesterday, so the next meeting is scheduled for February 8th. And is 5 o'clock the right time on that one? I don't remember where we're at in the rotation. I'm going to just say it's 5 o'clock and we're going to do 5 o'clock and start the rotation over at that one. Okay. Jay, Council Reports. Anything verbal? It was not submitted. Perfect.
I will submit my, I just want to make an announcement about Zero Waste is going to have hazardous waste event on Tuesday, the 19th. And that is part of my report because I have been in communication with Zero Waste, so I just want to make sure I have posted it and I also ask our wonderful city clerk to post it on our site.
Councilmember Cruz, do you know where that's going to be held?
You have to call for an appointment.
Perfect. If you have any information that we could share out on social media as well, it'd be great.
It's on the, it's on the announcement I sent earlier.
Okay, perfect, then I have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Informational Reports. We just did that one. Legislative Reports, Letters of Support or Opposition.
Then, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. City Manager, City Attorney Reports. David at order.
No reports.
Jose, do you have anything for us?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Status Update on Current Impacts to Water Supply.
Real brief, the storms we received over the last month have doubled the storage in Lake Minassino from approximately 21,000 acre feet to 42,000 acre feet. It's a significant increase in the reservoir levels. However, we continue to be subject to the curtailment order and continue our diversion reporting to the state, so we do ask our residents and our businesses to just continue to be mindful of water conservation.
Thank you, sir. Status Update on Current Emergency?
The current update is that our, Sonoma County Health Officer did issue an updated health order this week that has recommended that residents voluntarily shelter at home as much as possible to reduce the potential spread of the Omicron variant. The new health order does require some additional measures that be taken for large group meetings in terms of restrictions for groups of over 50 and for groups of 12 that are experiencing health impacts. We continue to monitor the current spread of the variant and just address those impacts as they arise in our community. And I know our police department is taking action to try to ensure the health of our officers.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. Council Direction on Future Agenda Items. Anyone have anything? Councilmember Bagby?
Mr. Mayor, just to follow up on the item earlier, I mean, I'm not sure we, did we give clear direction on bringing back the length of stay and any other issues in downtown? Did we give clear direction?
Yes, there was clear direction for Kevin to look into that and bring something back to us.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone for future agenda items? Nothing? Nothing? Councilmember Cruz? Anything?
No, I think I wrote something to David, but when I remember, I'll write to you.
Thank you.
I'll call you. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, our next meeting is scheduled for January 26th. Thank you all for being here and thank you, Jill, so much for everything. You make these meetings go so smooth.
Oh, thank you.
It is, after watching you last night, tonight, calm and cool, I love it. So this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you very much.